No, you're fine.
Are we good?
I probably need to be on this side.
Okay, we are gonna call a meeting to order. It is Wednesday, November 30th, 2022. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you got any new minutes or reports received to file? Okay, I think we'll forego our... unless somebody's got a new meeting. We'll skip that. Commission comments, bids and contracts, unfinished business?
I do have an unfinished business item. So yesterday you signed the cost sharing report for GMT. I have our actual cost report, which also needs a signature. This is just data that our consultant compiled for us based off of information from the auditor and from the billing company. So this is what they use to determine how much reimbursement we get. I just need a signature from Sam on this.
Okay. Okay.
So we voted on it?
So, do we have to vote on it? Are we approved that yesterday?
We voted yesterday.
Or?
All right. Unless Gil has...
Yeah, I mean, if you want to say, like, assign the...
Motion to sign the...
There you go.
GMT cost report.
GMT cost report.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, new business, signing of JAG application.
So, we're putting in for the JAG application. It's usually an application that us and JCPD put in together. We were denied, so now we're putting in by ourselves. It's a total of nine thousand, a little over nine thousand dollars. The grants are up to ten thousand dollars. We're gonna try to buy, if we get the grant, we're gonna buy lighting, convert C lighting for our vehicles with add-in, with some add-in antennas that we have on top of our vehicles. We want to make sure lights on the back of the vehicles, ensure their visibility.
Okay, so it's dependent on us getting the grant?
Right. You're just, you're signing the final application.
Make a motion to sign the application for the L-E-B-G grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. State ARPA grant for law enforcement.
This is a ARPA peace officers grant. It's a matching fund for up to twenty thousand dollars. We're gonna buy six more mobile radios for our vehicles. A total of thirty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty-five, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. So it'll be an equal match of nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents, and we'll pay out of contingency if approved.
Okay. Make a motion to sign the application for the ARPA SLFRF peace officers grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have anything else before we go into budget hearing? Hearing then, let's see, eight-thirty, John Wheeler, sheriff.
Until you're five, we can wait till eight-thirty if you would like, or I'm gonna begin now.
I would begin now.
Just so you know, the sheriff has agreed to take one-hundred percent of the nine-one-one cost.
Absolutely.
He's taking over animal control.
Are you running through the hazmat? Are you running through this afternoon, too?
I might have a nine-one-one call at that point, but yes, I am scheduled to.
Don't you have a diving suit or something you can wear?
I do.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Goes through, just like this, man, just like this.
Law enforcement starts on page one-oh-two.
Say it, Chief. One-oh-two.
The appropriations board we'll be talking about is on page one-six.
One-oh-six. Are these same ones?
Yeah, I gave you two.
I had one that you...
Yeah, I made some, I just moved some stuff around, but the numbers are the same.
So I can throw the older one away?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you gave me one, too.
Yeah, you can throw the older one away. I just move stuff around for easier for me to talk about. So, first off, with the auditor's budget, I concur with everything he put in there. There are four changes that though I do need to make, and I'll explain those as we go down. One of them was an oversight on my part. The other three were just variables that I didn't know about, so. So, the first thing is civilian pay raises. That's my number-one priority. We're able to give some pay raises to the uniforms, thank you very much, that has helped a great deal. And now I want to get my civilian pay raised up. The problem with the civilians is that's, they do the majority of my paperwork, and if I lose them, they don't come back, and it's, then we have to retrain, and it's just a vicious cycle that I want to make sure that we don't, that does not occur. One of the positions, one of the things that's not in the budget is with the hundred and thirty-seven thousand in the, in the black that I'm in, I want to take thirty thousand of that and help out IT with the new position that Brian's wanting to, I think he's wanting to, I'm probably getting into his stuff, but he's wanting another IT position, and we would want to give thirty thousand dollars towards that position. Four percent cola for all.
Can I ask you, was that in the...
Yeah.
That's to be added.
Yeah, that's, this is one of the changes that I told you about.
That's additional change, okay.
Yeah, so that's a change that I was gonna tell you about.
Okay.
Four percent cola for all. I know I agreed with the uniforms that we would not do the cola, but with the inflation going up as it is, I feel we'd be remiss if I did not ask for it. I did, it's gonna be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It is in the budget. I did, it is, he and I put it in the budget for everybody to get the four percent. And otherwise, unless otherwise stipulated, I adjusted the part-time civilians by bucking hour. They, we haven't given them a raise in a long time, so I was wanting to get my, my part-timers up, unless they're stipulated otherwise. Increased fuel line in all items. So our fuel, our fuel is, every time we come in and transfer money, it adjusted our, the budget line. So, when you look at it, it doesn't look like we adjusted our budget all that much, but we really did. So, we added some fuel to the all divisions. Increased meetings, travel dues in all divisions. The training is higher now to be able to go to. Sometimes, we try to get stuff that's local, but we have to send elsewhere, so having a higher amount of money in the training will allow us to be able to send more staff to different training. So, administration, we want to add a janitor position. If we can add the janitor position for cleaning for our facility, they could come in, work for me specifically, and that way we can get them to do small maintenance around, so paint pictures or whatever. And then you could take the, my thought would be that you could take the forty-nine thousand that you're currently paying, I think it's Gerard, with benefits and everything, and maybe spread it out with the other maintenance people. I don't know how you would do that, but that way it could help out Greg a little bit, and it would help us, because then I have somebody I can control over there on how the, how cleaning is done. Public notice increase, that's just because of different advertising and different platforms, utilities. I don't want to pay that extra money, but they'll shut us down, so we probably should pay them. So, and we don't have any choice on that. Meeting, travel dues, again, I've already talked about that. Fuel. Increased equipment service contract, this is another one that I just don't know, there's a variable in there that I don't know about. I agree with the number he put in there. Unfortunately, after, after we met, we're talking with, and this was Brian, too, which was in here, the corrections module for Tyler. We're thinking about having Tyler host it, and then we don't have to buy the servers, and we don't have to do the virtual sync, because the corrections module has a public-facing interface, and Brian doesn't want people to have access to our network, even though there'll be some firewalls there, but he still don't want that access, and if we were to do that, then Tyler would take all that liability on. And we've got a bid coming in. I just don't know how much that's gonna be, so. Training line increase, again, last year we used ARPA money to send people to the academy. We don't have the ARPA money this year, so I, we put twenty thousand. Public relations, we increased to go to job fairs, because we're going further out in the, in the state. Seven-oh-two support services, we want to promote a deputy to corporal in the schools unit. With the spread out and how far our schools are, and with Sergeant Stockman doing this animal control, unless EMS takes over, it, it makes it hard sometimes for supervision, so we want to promote that, that, one of the deputies to corporal. Make one part-time civil deputy position to full-time. We can't fill some of the part-time positions anyway, so we're wanting to make one of those part-time civilian deputies to a full-time deputy. It'll cost us forty-eight thousand. We're moving our part-time, part-time money. The amended budget was a hundred and six thousand. Our projected budget is gonna be ninety-six thousand, and we're requesting eighty-nine thousand. So, we're giving up some part-time money to be able to do that. Fuel's the same. The stipend, we have an FTO stipend we want to put in. So, in the, in the past, whenever we have a field, when we have a rookie going through field training, sometimes that can last up to four months, and you can't put one person with that rookie the whole time, because people have to take off because sick, people have to take off vacation, people have to take off because of court, so you end up switching rookies back and forth. We do compensate them, those individuals, when they're teaching like that, but it gets to be difficult on trying to track who's training who. So what we want to do is come up with a stipend, we're gonna pay them, I think it's twelve-hundred, yeah, twelve-hundred a year, and then no matter if they're teaching or not, they're getting an FTO stipend, and there's only gonna be so many positions in each division in support services, there'll only be three positions, and you have to, they'll have to compete for it. Those also, those FTOs are the ones that we do ride-alongs with, they're also the ones that we use for community events, so they're, they've been with us probably longer, they understand the program better, and they present well, a good image for the sheriff's department. Patrol division, we want to increase our part-time patrol deputy pay from twenty dollars an hour to twenty-four dollars an hour. As could be our part-time money right now, the projected budget was forty-two, our amended budget was fifty-two, and we're requesting sixty. There's only four part-time patrol, patrol division deputies, and they work, they work on the weekends, and they're allowed, by having them come in and work, it allows people to take off for overtime, and it also allows people to take off for vacation.
Now, we had increased them to twenty...
You did.
This year.
Right.
And did that fill...
We have one person, we have one person coming in, so we have two full-time, we have two right now, we have a third one that's thinking about coming to us. We want to go to the twenty-four, and then we can make sure that we'll have...
So this would bring us more part-time?
Bring us, well, we want it four. FTO stipend again in patrol division, there's eight positions in there, at twelve-hundred a year. Fuel increase, go down to jail division, we have, we're changing one part-time jailer to a full-time deputy. We lowered our part-time money there, too. So our amended budget for part-time in twenty-two was seventy-eight thousand, our projected is seventy thousand, we want to, we're gonna lower it to sixty thousand for the part-time. We're not, we're having, we, we have a hard time filling the jailer positions anyway, and so, and what's happening is, is because of our call volume on the ninety-six hours mental commitments, because of the hospital stays that we're going on, and some of the long transports we're having to do, we're using up our transports pretty hard. We actually need two in transports right now, but I didn't feel comfortable in asking for two this year. So by changing one of these part-time to full-time, we're hoping that assists the transports division over there, so that they are able to, we're not burning them out, because right now we're burning our people out.
The ninety-six, is it always UNPC, University of Missouri?
No.
You take them here and place...
We take them, we take them all over the state.
Where do you start? I mean, when, when you have one, someone to take, what, what's your first checkbox?
Well, so what happens is, and sometimes we know, sometimes we don't, a court order comes down and says there's ninety-six hours, so if, if it's, JCPD gets a ninety-six hour, they bring him to our jail.
Right.
And then we transport him to wherever in the state that the ninety-six hour says. The majority of the time it's MUPC, but we have taken people to St. Louis, we've had to ride in the ambulance before all the way down to Nevada, we've had to take them to Kansas City before, we had to take one to Farmington about three, three months ago, so, I mean, that was, that was a one person gone for the whole day, because it's, I mean, it's eight hours, so.
It's whatever the court order says.
Whatever the court order says.
If it doesn't say, where do you take them?
We, we don't, I mean, the court order has to say, has to dictate to us where we have to go.
Okay.
Or else we wouldn't take them. St. Mary's is, though they have a psych unit there, but they don't have very many beds, so if JCPD or somebody or one of the surrounding agencies brings somebody up and drop them off there and leave, once they get the court order ready and everything, then it's up to us to transport. Yeah, not a very good deal there. So, increase the court detail stipend, so we have five people that are getting three-hundred dollars a year for suits. Three-hundred dollars does not cover for suits, because they have to be in appropriate attire when they're in court. So I want to increase that to six-hundred dollars. After we did the budget, and I realized that I had requested a full-time deputy over there, then we're gonna change that, it was an oversight on my part, we're gonna change that to thirty-six hundred versus three thousand. Increase in meals, ninety-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, that's just a contract increase, we didn't have any choice on that. Meeting travel dues, of course, fuel increase, increase in inmate medical to sixty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars, yeah, four hundred and forty-three dollars. So there's a contract increase of seven thousand, four hundred and forty-three, and then we want to increase our nurse coverage from eight hours a day to ten hours a day. It's gonna cost us about fifty-three thousand dollars. It will increase the amount of time for sick time for the inmates, and it'll also be, they'll be able to do more meds and all that kind of stuff, it'll benefit us in the long run. Increase part-time jailer pay to twenty dollars an hour. So, if we do twenty dollars an hour, then I'm gonna plan on five part-time jailers, twelve hours a week for fifty weeks, is about sixty thousand dollars, and that's what we put on there. I hope this takes off, and I hope, I have to come back to you and say I need more money, because the part-time jailers coming in benefits us greatly, but I'll start out for sixty thousand and see where we're at. So right now we have an excess budget revenue of one, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-six, but the, the other, the other item that we need to talk about is the nine-one-one bill. Chief Hoy and I have talked about that. He wants to take it over, is he here? No. But we've decided to go by our call volume, and if you go by call volume, it's gonna be, he's gonna pay thirty-three percent, I'm gonna pay sixty-six percent. The new, the new number, and I don't know if you've got that, the new number that requested from JCPD is four hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and four cents. Got to make sure we pay that four cents. And so, Cole County Sheriff's Department will be responsible for three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-four cents. EMS would be a hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy cents. I'll get you that. Sam sent it out, I don't know if he sent it to you.
I think I got a copy of it, yeah.
Do you ever report the call volume?
No, because we're both using, projecting because annualization, so his, he's, he's annualizing right now about twelve thousand, I'm annualizing about twenty-one thousand. But, because we're annualizing calls for service right now, yeah.
I thought the city can.
Well, I mean, the city, the city can, the, the problem is, is until the end of December comes, we really don't know, so we're just projecting, we're annualizing out, to use your lucky terms, we're annualizing out to figure out what our terms are, so thirty-three and sixty-six percent, I think is fair, but...
What was it before?
I don't know.
I know we were talking about this before, you and I have had...
Wasn't it seventy-five, twenty-five?
I, I, I would say it was seventy, thirty, but I don't know that. Because, well, I can tell you, if you, if you do the numbers that in the, in the twenty-two budget, they're paying, he's paying thirty-one percent, and I'm paying the rest. So, I don't know, I don't know how we came up with that. I don't know if we did rock, paper, scissors, I have no idea how we did it. Usually when I get them...
Well, I think we looked at the call volume.
It was call volume, but I don't...
Now, you and I don't agree on this, but the call goes from nine-one-one to EMS dispatch. They dispatch your people.
Yes, sir.
So they're doing more on your end, so we felt like it should be more of a cost associated with your end of it. Now, bottom line is, it comes from the county, so we can sit here and have piss and match all day about it.
Right.
If Eric's agreed to it, the chief's agreed to it, then, I mean...
The only, and I agree with what you're saying, and I see, I probably, it's the most amicable resolution is probably saying call volume. The only issue that I'll bring up is, is we're not, we're not paying call volume to the city, they're not saying, we gave you this many calls, so you have to pay this amount of money. They're saying, we've had to use this many workers, we've had to have somebody with their butt in the seat to answer the phone, so regardless, they're answering. So the difference would be, I'm only gonna pay my deputies per call, versus I'm paying my deputies to be on call at ten hours. So, I, I get where you're coming from, and it's most amicable probably to do by call volume, but you still gotta pay for the person to sit in the seat, so...
It's seventy-five, twenty-five this year, that's how we're divided the bill.
So, but we both...
Like I said, Chief Hoy hasn't had a beef with it, if all of a sudden his budget starts getting tighter or something, and he needs to find something, you know, find a dollar here or there, that might be one of them, we go back and revisit, so...
Okay, but what if the sheriff's department's budget gets a little tight or something? Are we gonna look at it the same way?
We just don't add more people?
Yeah, see? Then do the same for EMS, sir!
So, that's another reason to get this nine-one-one center, the joint communications done, it would make absolute sense to do it, have it all in one place, and that's why we separated it out in EMS.
Yep.
So we'd know exactly what we've used for dispatch, so... It's just, it's a big project, and I think it's been talked about a lot. Are, have you been having meetings with the city about...
We, we haven't had any in a while.
We have another one coming up, we're actually meeting with the lawyers coming up, the four chiefs got together. We're gonna be meeting with the lawyers, let them review the MOU that we were looking at, and then to finalize the legal eavesdrop, and then we're gonna bring in the big group again, and go over what we've...
But we're working with the radios and everything, we're still working toward that.
Yes.
And we went and visited Boone County, and we were gonna go visit St. Charles County, but I don't know who the heck scheduled meeting on Friday afternoon, that just doesn't work, so, yeah, it's, it's, we've got the four gods, which is the sheriff...
I don't know if I'd say that, I'm not gonna go that far.
Eric, Chief Wildy, and, and Chief Schofield, they're the, they're the...
I'll say the four chiefs, I don't say the gods, I'll say the four chiefs.
Four chiefs, yeah.
Four chiefs meeting, what we call it.
So, it's, they've been, they've been lagging behind.
So we've had a little movement on that, just, let's try to keep it moving.
Yes, sir, we are.
It's gonna take some money, too, and depending on where it goes, but it just, we've been talking about this a long time.
Well, I can tell you, and I'm getting off topic here, is Brian, because I'm supposed to talk to Brian if you're here, so, all right, so, the, the, we're moving very good on efficiency there. We're all going to Tyler, and that's gonna improve our response time, it's gonna improve the safety, so we're doing a lot of good things in behind the scenes, it's just gonna take some time for everybody to catch up. The amazing thing is that we have everybody in the room talking, so that is the amazing thing, and we're...
Yeah, that's a huge step.
That's a huge step, and we're pushing forward with that momentum, so, everybody in there is wanting to do the right thing for the citizens of Cole County, and I think that if we keep talking, and then we'll keep moving those increment steps, but we want to go, we don't want to go too fast, we want to make sure that we're trying to look at as much as possible.
Sure, but keep it moving.
Yes, sir.
I think is the biggest thing, and if we can help in any way.
Again, just getting your radios, you know, working towards that is gonna be a big step. We went by Tyler Technologies booth at, at MAC, they give us the damn thing, so I've...
You can get a pad of paper or pencils, so now you're mad?
Are you kidding me? I can't walk away from any of those vendors down there wanting to load you up with stuff.
Yeah.
Just give me your email and I'll...
Yeah, I know, I usually take Bowler's cards with me and pass them out, so he gets all the... As far as you know, it's, that's not true. But anyway, the other thing I was gonna talk to you about is contingency money this next year, this next year. You already know that I'm looking at changing out my security envelope, unfortunately, to change out the security envelope for the, for the sheriff's department, we're gonna have to build a data room down in the, down in the interstitial area, so we've already meeting with Architects Alliance, we're trying to ascertain the amount of money it's gonna cost to do that. We have to build the data, the data room has to be complete before we can implement the security electronics, but that doesn't mean we can't move forward with the security electronics, so we're, we're looking at changing all the cameras out. We have a great building, it's a nice building, it's eleven years old, and the technology, we need to change our technology. So, right now we're not even using digital, so we need to, we need to upgrade our facilities' cameras. We can also, I think we have currently a hundred and six cameras in our facility, and I think we can lower that quite a bit with the, with the different technology of the cameras that's available now, and then we'll go from there. But like I said, we're working with Brian, Brian is in every meeting we have about this, Brian's in every meeting in reference to Tyler Technology, Brian's in every meeting in reference to the nine-one-one center, so he's in every meeting with this, because I don't want no surprises. The other things that I'm looking at using contingency money for is the classroom build-out. Our classroom, I want it, it's, I can only fit not even a third of my people in there, so I want to extend it past the death pit, all the way to the, to the elevators, that's one thing that, that I would like to make sure. And then over there, where the exterior entrance for the detectives, I want to put an overhang over that, we use that quite a bit, and so if we can keep the rain and snow off of that, well, one thing, to keep it off the entrance there, so we're not tracking it in as much. And then the other thing, so whenever the staff is going in and they have papers and stuff, it's, they're protected by the weather. I, I think that's gonna be pretty minor, but it is something I'm looking at, I want you to be aware of. Other than that, I really don't have anything else.
Anything about...
Oh, parking, yeah, thank you. So, the other thing, and I was talking to two, all three of you about, when, when Hoy stole my property for that EMS center, it's taken away some of my parking, so, and I just want to keep reiterating, I keep talking about no parking, no fees, I'm actually getting a T-shirt made, but don't tell Hoy. But anyway, I just don't want us to forget about that, because it's, and, and when I talk to each, each one of you individually, it's apparent to me that you have not forgot about that.
No.
But it is a concern that I have for my staff, so I'm gonna keep bringing it up.
Who's parking was that?
See, why you gotta do that? It was law enforcement sales tax money, sir.
And I'm, I'm also meeting with Dr. Yates at the Baptist convention, see if they have anything at all that'll work.
But I think what Sheriff was talking about was on the other side.
Yeah.
On the west side of the building.
I think there's a waiting list on that.
Okay, well, it's worth looking into, so...
Well, I think there's, you have a few options there, I, I would rather not put us on the other side of East McCarty, that's an awful busy roadway for people to be crossing in the middle of the night and, and stuff like that, but if we could bring that, I mean, and we may not have a choice, but I would, I just want to keep reiterating about the parking.
I'd just check on those other spots you had talked to us about, and get a, if they're available, and get a price, and look...
I'm, I'm not opposed to talking to the city, if, if you feel like it's okay for me to do so, but I didn't feel like...
Are those city or those private? Those are city.
City, well, it's City Parking Authority, I think.
Okay.
They're city, and then they're City Parking Authority.
Didn't know if some of them belong to the buildings, because a couple of them across from us have their own spots in the back as well, but...
Well, Dawson, I, I know a lot of Dawson tenants, but Dawson rents a bunch of spaces, and then he sub-rens them to the tenants.
Yeah, and it's, it's still city, but the, to the east of the jail, that Baptist convention has a lot of parking there, so...
That would be optimal spot for us, but, but also that, the city parking lot that's further, further east, if we could just buy that lot out, right, that would be nice, but I don't know if that would be possible, maybe not one so, I don't know.
I'll, I'll set up a meeting where we go talk to Dr. Yates.
Yes, sir. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
I have a question for Mark, so after all is been said, and we started today with a hundred and thirty-seven and change in, in the black, according to the sheriff.
Can I point out that does not include any capital expenses?
No, that's right, it does not.
Okay, but, but so what's the new number? Is, is there only one change?
Yes, so it's a hundred and thirty-seven, seven hundred and forty-six is what's in the black now. The nine one one overage puts me an additional six thousand, three hundred and twenty-three, which puts me at a positive of one hundred and forty-four thousand and sixty-nine dollars. The thirty thousand dollars from IT puts me in the black, a hundred and fourteen thousand and sixty-nine dollars.
Got it.
I'm glad you had those figures, 'cause I.
So you got a few, you got a few tweaks to make.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, I made note of all those.
If we okay that.
There's four items, right? There's the four?
Uh, the IT.
Right.
Equipment service contract, that needs to change.
The nine one one bill.
The nine one one and the court stipend.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Got those.
I'll see the MTO stipend.
They're on, they were in there.
Yeah, we talked, yeah.
That salary schedule I gave you did not include those, but I, I went, the final budget number we used came straight off of his schedule, and I just didn't get a chance to add that to the.
I might have copies of it.
But I'll make sure that final salary schedule is updated completely.
Do you want me to send you a copy of that? Okay, and you want the one for the court detail also, Teddy? Increasing that? Yeah, okay, well, not adding people, just adding money to the court stipend. Well, five, we're going to, yeah, we're doing from five to six people, yeah.
That's for a new position you're asking for, right?
Right. Well, it's a promotion of the, yeah.
Okay, that's, yeah.
Thought I had the, my capital improvements, but I did not bring them. I apologize. Yeah, so my capital improvements are four hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. It includes vehicles, two hundred and eighty thousand, computers at twenty thousand, tasers and cartridges, thirty thousand, MDTs at twenty-six thousand, Kalia twelve thousand, IA Pro, which is a program for internal affairs, is twenty-three thousand, six hundred. Equipment standardization for some equipment for SWAT and some other training, fifteen thousand, and then BLS instructors is seventy-three hundred. Yeah, oh, sorry. Page one oh two.
And I gave, oh, I gave all you all a copy of the capital improvements. Well, yeah, I saw my handout. Anything on the other funds?
No.
Not too much there. Of the revolving fund, there's still a personal service reimbursement, reimbursed for one.
Yeah.
One position, okay.
And probably twenty twenty-four, we'll have to look at taking that and moving it over to my, to, to my operational budget, because I mean, we're running out of money, so. Yeah.
On the vehicles, are we getting a red high performance vehicle?
As far as you know, that is correct.
Sheriff, if you wanna make any comments about turnover, not turnover, pre the raises during the year and post raises.
Yeah, the raises, I think we're, God, I didn't bring in the numbers. I think we're ten down right now, and you remember back in March, we were twenty-six down? So, the majority of those, well, I think we're eleven down now since yesterday, but there are.
Is that patrol or jail?
Both.
More in jail or more in patrol?
So I think, I think we're a full-time position. I think we're, are we two away from full-time for full staff or one away from full staff in the patrol division? One. In the jail, is it three? For full-time? So. Why, what numbers you have?
I only have one in the jail and one in patrol, full-time. If you're talking part-time ones, you may know more than I know about people that are just recently quit that I don't know about.
We did have a couple, but maybe they're, I don't know if they're recently quit or they're getting ready to, they're moving to, one, I know one we're losing to another agency. I, I don't remember now, but I'll get those numbers and send them to you.
Are you taking deputy positions too, Lou?
Yes.
Have you been able to get any part-timers in the jailer positions to, it's just not a part-time job, but.
People just don't, I mean, I'm hoping raising it up to, 'cause right now, I think we're only paying fifteen or fourteen bucks an hour. I'm hoping raising it up to twenty dollars an hour will, 'cause what I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get some corrections, you know, some guys from the prisons to come in and do twelve hours on the weekend, you know?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, somebody can subsidize their income and, or supplement their income.
Right.
But, I mean, you gotta make it worth them coming in, 'cause they don't wanna come in and work overtime and get paid low straight time, but.
Well, and I'm, I mean, law enforcement alone is not an easy job, and it's not for everybody.
Being stuck inside the jail.
Working in the jail is a whole different animal.
For fourteen fifty, I'd, I'd flip hamburgers before I'd work in your jail offense.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not an easy job. It's, it's something that you wanna do, and it's, it's, I mean, it's a calling, so, we're hoping that it attracts more, 'cause it helps us. We can do with our full-time, but we're hoping that part-time does better for us.
Does, it takes some stress off your full-timers and lowers your overtime, so.
Well, and truthfully, I'm going, I mean, I hope it lowers my overtime, without a doubt, but really, what I'm going for, for, for all of my staff, and I think Hoy talks about this a lot, too, is quality of life for the, because you can pay them, I mean, we can raise their pay to a hundred thousand a year, but if I'm working eighty, ninety dollars, or eighty, ninety hours a week, it's not, they're not gonna stay. It's not the pay, it's the quality of life. They're not able to be home. December's a hard time, because there's Christmas concert their kids wanna go to, and, you know, they got all this stuff going on, and if they have to work six full-hour shifts in a row, I mean, that makes for a very tiring work week. So I appreciate the pay raises you gave us for the uniforms in the middle of the year. I hope that you push forward with the, with the pay raises for the civilians. It does work. If nothing else, it holds in here. Like I've told my staff before, I'm not trying to pay you to where, I can't pay you what you're worth, 'cause there's just not enough money in the budget through county employees' period, but I'm hoping to get their pay up high enough that they can afford to.
I've never heard anybody say they get paid what they're worth.
No. Any other questions?
I don't think so.
I'll get the numbers for the, I'll get the numbers for our staff or our vacancies to you. I'll send them to you, and then I'll also send the FTO and the court stipend details to you. We have, it's in the, it's in the budget, but I can send it to you specifically, so you can see what we're shooting for. And we're gonna have to have, we'll have to have some kind of identification on who is getting those FTO positions, so that way, 'cause there's only gonna be that many positions, and that's it. And Betsy's listening, apparently, 'cause she sent me a deal. If I get it to come up, because I don't have my glasses.
Have we told the revenue? I guess we have, about the reduction?
Oh, yes.
And that, if that's effective?
One month.
One month.
Yeah, it's Department Revenue's job to let all the vendors know, so I have had a couple calls from different vendors, but yes, it will go down one month. We probably won't see the effect until probably February, March.
At least February, maybe March, yeah.
So our staffing, we have a total of fourteen vacancies, five vacancies in seven oh four in the jail, one vacancy full-time.
You're talking part-time, too?
No.
Oh, that's five full-time?
Fourteen altogether. There's five full-time positions in the jail, one full-time position in patrol division, one part-time position in patrol division, and six part-time positions in the jail. Oh, and one part-time position in the support services, so a total of fourteen. But we went from twenty-six to fourteen, so. Thank you, Betsy.
I've kept up real close on this since I've been doing budget, and I figured we'll get that salary schedule complete by the end of the year, or by the time we prove budget.
I'd blackout the names on that employee name there.
It's public.
I just put, I just had, I had it up, I put it down.
I don't know if anybody will see it, anyway.
Oh, you can't see it.
So when the chiefs are in the Super Bowl.
Just wait another fifty years.
Okay.
Do you have anything else for me?
No. I'm about to run real quick and get my pillow going back.
Thank you very much.
It's my running ahead special.
Hey, you got another forty-five minutes?
Who's next? We can get him in here.
Brian.
Brian.
All right.
Yeah, this is the hot, this has been the hot seat here.
Aaron, I'll leave that ticket up on the desk at some point. I'll shoot you an email.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
I think we need to get some of those thousand-dollar chairs that everybody else is buying. Don't you, whatever. I'm gonna go get a shot in my spine and stuff.
What's that? Was that a north? Yeah, I didn't wanna do it, but.
I just gotta get through this, so.
There you go, when you can. At least we're not making a difference in length like that. It's a long piece of.
I got my best shirt combination.
I'll tell them that mine, I give up, I give up Cheetos for that. That's my junk food weakness, so. Wish you hadn't brought that. Just two days.
Two days, okay. Cool, all right, we'll see ya.
We moved it from Wednesday to Friday, 'cause you got a conflict next Wednesday. You did. You did, okay, I know, some, I knew somebody.
We got Thursday and Friday next week?
Yeah, 'cause normally that'd been a Wednesday, Thursday thing in the past, I think, but. Stay in it. Conflict on Wednesdays.
Not really.
What page are we on for Brian's? We got that figured out already?
Fifty.
There it is. Okay, any questions?
I was gonna ask you that.
I'm not going that far. You're welcome.
Thank you for the donuts, Joe.
You're welcome.
You have handout or just, I got some of your schedules, I can show them on the screen.
Actually, what I was gonna do was just pull them up, instead of print them all out and hand them out, just pull them up on the laptop. So if you could do that, that would be, be great. It's an awful lot of printing, you know, just to, probably just to throw it away.
Now, do you have half, the sheriff paying for?
I heard it say.
Is that, is that, that's not in this?
Well, we budgeted for a, another position.
Yeah.
But I think it was fully funded from the county side, wasn't it? We didn't count the sheriff as funding it half.
It's, it's in your budget.
Yeah, so, no, I didn't count on the sheriff paying for half of it, but that way, or I presented it. So, from, from an IT perspective, we had a very active year. I would say this would be the year of emphasizing the overall security and stability of the county network infrastructure. So we've invested quite a bit in that infrastructure this year. So some of the things we were planning on twenty twenty-three, we actually moved up to twenty twenty-two. So the information I emailed you when I created the budget actually has changed some due to the fact that we went ahead and decided to implement a lot of those new systems. So I went through yesterday with Mark and kinda updated, so some of the expenses that I have budgeted for, I actually took out, because our new services cover those. So I was able to offset several thousand dollars of that, this, this added expense. But, but obviously, the security envelope and stuff like that added quite a bit to our overall operating budget from the IT department's perspective. So we do, you know, we use Huber and Associates to manage our overall security portfolio to include spam filters, also upping and keeping our, our firewalls and things like that up to speed. We use them to, let's see, what else? We, we use them a bunch of things. I had it off the tip of my tongue, not tip of my tongue, but, but anyway, we use them to do a lot of those things, and so before, we had basically myself and Brent and some Melissa trying to do those things, and it just wasn't, we weren't able to keep up with it all. So that's why, especially with the onset of all these ransomware attacks and things like that that were happening, especially some folks, it seemed like most of them had been focused on healthcare, but some government. We went ahead and decided to invest in upgrading our, our security portfolio, and so we have got that about sixty percent implemented. So like, we tried to knock down like the big things first, like making sure like all the antivirus and things like that are up to date, making sure the firewalls are up to speed, making sure our spam filters are working, all those different things like that, but it did increase the cost quite a bit. And, but I think for the overall good, it justifies, it, you know, the unjustified means as far as how we're doing that, so. So anyway, the, the big ticket item we do, and I was looking at our, you know, our expenses, and actually, the number that you have in there, the one seventy-nine figure that was on that spreadsheet annually.
Salaries?
No, this is on equipment service contracts.
Oh.
As part of that figure is on that spreadsheet.
Spreadsheet, should pull it up.
Yeah, pull up that spreadsheet. And there should, there should be something there like Huber.
Is this maintenance costs?
Yeah, yeah. That's right there, one seventy-nine, seven sixty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that figure, you know, we did the, the backup and disaster recovery add-on after the, after I sent you that, that paperwork or that information. So that, that figure actually is two forty-three, eight forty annually, and not one seventy-nine, because we had another five thousand a month to that.
What was that, two forty-three?
Yeah, here's the, here's the information for it. So that's, that's, that's really the big change that I came across after I'd already sent you the information for the budget. Our communications costs went up, I think, Debbie vouched for that, because we enhanced our internet service, so we went from a, this overall sixty megabit connection to a hundred megabit connection, which is not quite doubling it, but getting it there. And then each location has its own internet connection. So we, we pushed that up quite a bit in order to get the redundancy thing taken care of, where no one site, if the internet went down, would fail and things like that, but then also give them the ability to be able to use their, so a lot of the applications are hosted now, they're on, they're on the internet, so they will get those quicker and better utilize them, so. So anyway, there's always a ton of work that goes on behind the scenes to make all that happen, but, but those are the, those are the biggies that we did, and we continue to do this year and next year, and honestly, you know, the whole security portfolio will just constantly, will be a constant, I would say, from here on out. And then the only other thing I really have is I've requested an additional position in order to be able to keep up with the amount of things we're taking care of. So for instance, I don't think everybody kinda realizes, you know, we do the, we do all the DVR systems. We take care of all of the ambulance, wireless accesses and things like that, and now the sheriffs. So you're looking at, like, the ambulance. So you're looking at like the ambulances are roughly around nineteen to twenty. And then you're looking at the sheriffs, which are approximately thirty-eight, thirty-nine, different mobile devices and things like that are going. So and then we're upgrading servers. You know, it's interesting, when I first started here, we used to have hardware boxes. So each each server was one box. Well, now we have forty, roughly forty-six servers, but we only have about six or eight boxes. So I mean, you know, the it's just technology's come a long way and it takes a lot to keep up with it and things like that. So but anyway, I mean, I don't know that I really have that much for you, that much else for you other than than that.
The new position you're asking for is like an entry level salary of like thirty-five thousand?
Well, I think I sent that in in what I based that on to you. Did I not do that? Because I was looking at, yeah, like a level two type thing now. With that being said, you know, I was talking to the sheriff and, you know, I think he's thinking we need something more robust than that. Just because that your two biggest IT resource users are the sheriff's department and EMS. I mean, if you took, you wanted to break it down. So and it's it's just the nature of of what they're trying to do from a car or from a from an ambulance. So so anyway, with the sheriff's office and stuff like that, I think he was hoping that, you know, he would fund that position so much as he would, you know, give a percentage of it.
Does he would house that person over at the jail?
He yeah.
Is that his way?
Yeah, he would like he would like that, yeah.
But he would still this person would still work for you?
Right.
Say, go out to EMS if there's something.
But you're asking for a full-time person countywide, not just for the sheriff's office. So why would you house it over there? I mean, I don't know why they can't have somebody over there that's kind of in charge of IT stuff and somebody at EMS that's kind of in charge of IT stuff. We've got a lot of chief deputies over at EMS. I think that's something that can be maybe to take it off your lap, but not so much hiring another person to do it. I mean, we got plenty of people that should be able to handle this stuff.
Yeah, I kind of do that some now, probably without them really even kind of realizing it because so.
I know now.
And I do now, I got it.
Well, and what I reason why I say that is is because so McKinley over EMS, he's the communications officer over there. So he does a lot of those things too. So I mean, that's to your point, right? I mean, we're actually using Mac to do that. So here lately with, you know, we're trying to get thirty-nine credit points installed over at the sheriff's office and things like that. So here lately, Officer Rennick has been helping me do that because he has a little bit of a electrical background on making those things happen. So and then, you know, they're trying to do that during their their, I don't even know what kind of hours you call that, office hours or something like that. But I don't know that you can just depend on that all the time. And so like like we get a lot.
We've got several people over there that we've got to utilize.
Yeah, but it's more like skill sets and what they have. You see what I'm saying? So like like a a IT professional, they don't have like a like a background in IT. So you wouldn't want them necessarily doing IT type work, you know, because honestly, you one person could do.
I understand because I know where I go for computer stuff.
I I volunteer Sam to be that for the commission.
Right.
That's that's. That person.
That's your poster child.
I mean, really, you have you have your office.
Right.
But you're when you're working on computers, you're not in your office. You're you're at one of our eight buildings.
Right.
This person, even if he's housed at the at the jail, he can do the jail, but if he has to go to Public Works or he has to go, he's still he's still gonna work, not just for the sheriff.
Right. Yeah, that's right. So and I think we're with the sheriff.
Why are you gonna house him at the sheriff's office? Why wouldn't you house him with the rest of the IT people?
Well, so like, for instance, we took a look at our space. We took a look at our space that we have available down there. And so like, right now, what I'm trying to avoid is having to do a remodel or something like that. So Brent right now works out in open space in amongst the servers and things like that, which is works, but it's not ideal, right? Because you got all the noise in the background. I'm just saying that the sheriff, and I've talked to the sheriff, he has room available to house somebody over there like that. So I'm sitting there thinking, you know, if he's got the room, then why not utilize that? You know, utilize that space, not that it's solely dedicated to the sheriff's department, but just so much as have utilized that space. So that's that's kind of what I'm where I'm coming from.
And I'm fine wherever he's housed.
But.
Were you able, I sent you when we were at Mac?
Yeah.
To get that they're gonna fly for up to two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so Nick Tietzort's actually helping. Yeah, we just actually started communicating about it. But he asked me, he said, would you like, you know, like my help with this? And I said, absolutely. So we're gonna work on getting that because we should go through and you read that grant, a lot of what that grant applies for is things that we're doing.
Yeah.
So so I think we're gonna be able to get some recover some costs from that as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping.
Now, I'm not talking about the position. I'm talking about these ongoing services that we've been.
Now, I think this money was actually set aside for some of these smaller counties. Because when we sat in on these cybersecurity, I'm like, how do these little counties with with eight thousand people in the whole county or smaller? We talked to one county, they have forty-five hundred people in their whole county. I mean, cybersecurity, you know, is. So I think that's what this money was for. But if we can get up to two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We can use it.
So housing them at the sheriff.
Yeah.
It's still our property. It doesn't matter where it's at.
That's true.
But it just doesn't make sense to have them all spread out. To me, it doesn't. And I think you should have a you should have a liaison or whatever you want to call it at sheriff's office, the same over at EMS, the same with the marshals. Maybe somebody in the clerk's office. No, I can get you probably four more offices down there if you want me to. We can build some walls.
Actually, I think this I think you're playing right into the sheriff's hand because he would like the whole IT department at his office and not just.
Yeah.
At who's off in his office?
He he would, yeah. He he had offered.
So so but but I think obviously, I I agree with you on that liaison thing. And I think but I guess what I was saying is I think that's already kind of happening, but it's not really defined.
Well, I just it seems like we should be having, you're not ever not gonna have enough work to do. But I don't know if we need to be adding positions for it because we're doing a lot of stuff online hosted. We've got the security being done by Huber and stuff now, so it's a little less stuff on your plate. And if somebody's got to wait an extra day to get their new laptop at their desk or something, I mean, it's just gonna have to wait. That's life. So unless you're commissioner, then we get it move to the top, but.
Well, it's it's it's.
I'm still waiting.
I I still haven't ever seen the whole.
I was just kidding about that.
I was like, no way.
My mind is getting really close to.
Life is the life that we want is whenever we can't get the computer to work, we can't get the printer to work, something's wrong is we just dial your number and you say, I'm on my way. That's the way we want it to work. But and and to say and for you to say, I'll get to it tomorrow and we're.
Right.
Okay. Hey, let me ask a question, more of a history question here, probably. The revenue side of your. Which is, you know, it's transfers in, all right? How is there some theory behind? What that ought to be?
We have that indirect cost study done every two years.
All right.
And that gentleman does a very in-depth detail of the equipment, the backups, the space that each entity or each department takes up on the file servers and stuff like that. And then he comes up with the full cost analysis of what that is for the assessor, for the.
Collector.
Law enforcement. Every department, really, but we use it to charge back these other funds.
Right.
Just at a glance from fifty thousand feet, it it doesn't make sense to me to only charge all the other offices a hundred and ten thousand dollars to run an operation that costs six hundred and eighty-two thousand.
It goes into the salaries and it goes into.
Well, I mean, there the everybody is paying, when you add them all up, they pay nineteen percent of what it costs the LIT.
Those are ones I think have other funds, right?
We're talking just the other funds.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything he does to GR funded.
Does not get paid.
Departments, we're not we're not there's no.
I think.
So is does GR make up the difference?
Yes.
Well, I mean, they do, but.
All of his costs are paid out of GR and then.
That's what I'm assuming.
Instead of charging.
Ones in GR.
Which is.
What'd you say, nineteen percent?
Sorry?
You said nineteen percent?
Yeah.
Somehow, we're we're just we're just charging the other funds.
Of that nineteen percent, maybe.
It's too low.
Twenty-five percent comes from law enforcement, twenty-five comes from assessor's office. What's the other ones that have their own funding?
EMS.
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 Assessor.
Assessor.
So but don't we have outside? Information that does the the cost on that?
The indirect cost study, Dave Griffin and Associates is the one that does the study. We started that study basically not for that purpose, but for to get the four D money back from the state and child support money. It was required. And then we started using that report for.
Do we need to maybe challenge it then on the IT part?
We can. We can ask him to look into it harder. This is the year and two thousand twenty-three will be the year we have it again. We didn't have it for this year. It'll be based on twenty-two. Now, all the capital usually gets bought out of the right fund. So it's not really any of the capital, it gets bought. So it's just the indirect expenses within the IT department.
Well, and honestly, the expenses have skyrocketed.
Right.
And so that's it's gonna change. It has to change. It should change.
Well, if you can just look here on that one account, the equipment service contract, we were at two fifty-two, we're looking at four-ten now. So it's definitely, but they're gonna look at two thousand and twenty-two. They're not looking at two thousand twenty-three when they come back in. They they have to have a year completed.
Well, it's it's three fifty for the current year where it's projected.
Okay.
It's it's jumped.
They'll they'll look at actual.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, that was twenty-one.
Since Dale used to come before us with his budget and it was minuscule, but.
The security part is gonna.
Those are more innocent times, I guess.
It's just it changes so fast that you just you have to change with it or if you don't, you're gonna save yourself.
Okay.
For a few years, so. I don't know any other way to do that. I mean, you know, you're talking about supporting roughly four hundred people. Almost that many servers and and workstations, another forty network devices, not to mention all the access control, all the DVR units. And I'm doing that with two and a half people. And so that's why I'm saying, I mean, I don't, you know, I put it in for one, but I did one because I thought two would really catch a lot of trouble. But but honestly, I mean, I'm doing I'm doing a lot with very little.
I I agree you are doing a lot with the you and Brent do. Go on and put Melissa in that group too.
Melissa's a great.
Y'all do, but I just think that sometimes each department elected officials need to have kind of a go-to person and to be able to help out with it. And, you know, you're gonna have to teach some of us dummies how to use some of this stuff ourselves or we have to wait. I've gone without my iPhone for one day before. I lived. It was okay.
Yeah.
It's painful, but.
Well, so.
It's okay.
You know, we had a basically a network outage yesterday afternoon and it just about killed the the prosecutors or attorney's office because they're 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 dependent upon that to get to their software. So, I mean, what happens then is I drop.
How does an extra person help you with that?
Well, I dropped what I did. See, I'm calling I'm a working director, right? Not that all the rest of them are, but I literally have my hands doing the IT work and stuff. So, I mean, I would love to be able just to plan and and project and all the other stuff like that. But I've done this all my life where, you know, I'm also one of the the people that are putting it in too. So, I mean, you know, it's not it's easy math. You take half your staff out, you fifty percent of your workforce out, everything else stops. And it's it's something every day, all day long.
I came back at five thirty and he was still roaming around in the dark. But I wanted the homeless guys.
Jeff, if we didn't have computer access, we couldn't do anything in our office.
Are you okay?
Very little.
Did you survive?
We couldn't work.
We went home. What are you talking about?
Yeah.
Not really, we didn't.
I'm gonna go through some files, clean them out while you wait for the computers to come back. I understand what you're saying.
Well, you can't do our job. Let's put it that way. We couldn't do our job.
How'd they do it before computers?
Well, we adapted.
Well, here's.
That's the problem. We don't we didn't have to go backwards.
Before computers, they didn't call IT.
Right.
They just went to the filing cabinet.
Said my phone's not working.
They did everything.
The thing about it is is I heard your comment yesterday.
I can't get a hold of y'all on party line here.
The your comment, your comment was made yesterday is is, you know, we've got all this technology in place. It should be allowing us to do a lot more and it is. But what happens is when the technology stops working, it it knocks your workforce down to almost a, I would say, zero productivity, but less than fifty percent. So the thing is, is we've got a, in my my opinion, we have to keep the workforce in a very good positive state where they're able to do their jobs and so they can support right everybody. And that's honestly, that's all my job is, is making sure everybody else can work. And so that's what I do. And and I think that one more person would really benefit that effort, especially so like, and I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, like I put in eighteen monitors in the collector's office on Monday. So, I mean, I mean, it would be not, it would be really, really good if I had a person to be able to go out and do that in addition to Brent because Melissa's GIS. You know, you know, she that's what her job is, is GIS. And then she helps out with, you know.
Website.
Yeah, the website and all that other stuff like that. So I'm just sitting there going, I mean, you're right, you can wait. But I don't know, like, right now, the health department's been waiting on some new laptops for about a month, so.
Did we ever find out what caused that yesterday?
Yeah, yeah. So we had a a job out there that was basically pulling down all our bandwidth. So like, you're just allowed like a big one pipe, right? Three-inch pipe. And if if something's flooding that pipe, it brings everything to it.
You said we. We had a job out. Who's we? You won't give it give it up?
That kind of falls into closed session stuff.
Okay. All right.
Period of follow-up on your that fee. We actually offset the law enforcement.
Transfer.
IT costs from their GR transfer because we're supposed to transfer like, right, two million dollars every year from general to law enforcement. We offset that by their hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
For computers.
Is their IT cost.
Okay, so and 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 another way of accounting is this hundred and ten thousand up there is really half of.
Half of it, yes.
Less than half.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It just seemed like a small number to me as time goes by. Okay.
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure I picked on you like I picked on Nick too, so. And I understand my computer will probably shut down as soon as you walk out here. So but no, I'm not saying y'all aren't doing your jobs and y'all don't work.
No, 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 I don't think it like that at all.
We we've added a lot of people in the last several years and we just gotta restore some kind of fiscal restraint here and just quit adding people and every time somebody just asks, so.
Well.
I'm gonna grill you too.
Yeah, the only, you know, the only way I see that that you you are able to accomplish that is if you quit adding. Equipment and features and things like that that you need.
You gotta quit being an enabler. You know what?
I know, I am an enabler, right?
Next time Sam comes in and says, I'm having troubles here, you know what? I'm gonna give you a button that says Ctrl Alt Delete. Try that one. Try Ctrl Alt Delete and see what it does. Reboot.
Some issues.
Oh, I understand there's some that.
Over the phone, but.
We'll teach you how to Google.
My computers.
You've got a hammer that takes care of a lot of it.
Would that work?
So.
It worked for that one.
I mean, I tried to do it before I bring it to you because I always felt stupid bringing it to them.
No. It's it's an issue.
It's a good it's a good thing.
Yeah.
It's a good thing.
Yeah. I see what I see what you're saying. So so her question was, is does everybody have the basically the ability to install whatever they want to on their own computers? And the answer is no, not everybody has that.
It should be hello.
Yeah. So so.
Therefore.
Yeah, therefore, you know, we get calls. We get a lot of calls. So like, for instance, you know, I could I could I could present you with a lot of numbers, but so like Huber, they did over five thousand calls for us so far this year. Those are calls we never even seen. And we try to get everybody to use like the portal on our county website to log a ticket. But I also get it too. But I also get it too. It's easier just to call me, right? Or it's easier just to email me or something like that. So we do calls all day long, every day. And so it, it's hard to measure that. That's honestly why we wanted to use the portal, so I could give you a measurement on it. But honestly, at the end of the day, it's just, it's, it's easier for somebody to call and say, hey, I got a problem in your company or something. Somebody get that too, so.
There is capital set aside on page one-twenty for IT too.
Can I, can I clarify the deposition?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you only asking for like, we pay thirty-five thousand or?
Well, so that's what I originally went, was going for.
Is that something we, you would like?
Yeah, 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 that's all. But, so like for instance, until the sheriff just said it, I didn't know that that was for sure gonna happen. So I just had to kind of go with what money I thought I could get, right?
It may not for sure happen, but if.
Yeah.
So you've got your number in.
That's something he's requesting.
Right.
And if, if.
If it happens, if it happens, if it doesn't, it doesn't. Yeah. But, uh, but yeah, that number will change based upon the funds I have. Cause, so like for instance, you know, if I could go to another level IT and, you know, why wouldn't I do that? Instead of just bringing in somebody at the basement and trying to figure out, teaching them along the way. So I don't know how we, I don't know how we do that, but.
Talk about that in the final.
Right.
Set a number in the final budget.
Yeah.
All right.
So what was just said about number, or page one-twenty-five?
The capital.
Yeah, one-twenty shows capital for IT at the three hundred and thirty thousand. I guess there's probably some type of a list.
Can, yeah, there's a.
But that's changed. We went through that and that's.
You wanna, you wanna pop that up there and we'll, I think you highlighted what changed in red or yellow.
I don't see that.
Yeah, the Hoover backup services of sixty-four thousand goes away.
Right.
So that would reduce, that's the only one, right?
Yeah, that's the big one. Now, go, if you go over two maintenance costs over there though, I think we did some stuff in there, right?
Right, right. For the capital list, take off about sixty, what did I say? Sixty?
It's over seventy thousand.
Sixty-four thousand.
Plus.
Capital. Then maintenance, yeah, we identified. That's all in your.
Everything in red.
Equipment services contract, but.
Yeah. So like I said, you know, when we added those new services, it eliminated some of the other services. And so those, those numbers are, that I submitted, actually kind of are offset a little bit. Like this two hundred and forty-three thousand is offset by whatever that total is.
Right. Sixty-seven. Three. Six. About thirty-four, thirty-five thousand you identified off of this.
Off of that list.
This list, and there's a sixty thousand off of.
Right, so about a hundred grand, something like that. So it's not as, yeah, it's not as, you know, like I said, um, you know, the necessity to get those things going this year is what kind of made that all change after the fact, so.
Do you do a lot with the election books and stuff too, or are those mostly, they're mostly taken care of?
So I've helped them with it and I've spent some time on it, but to sit there and say that I do quite a bit of it, I don't.
It is a little busier though during an election cycle.
Absolutely. So I've, I've helped Matt and Steve with. Because those, all those iPads are registered to like Apple or Noe or something like that. So there are challenges with getting it to sync and things, things like that. So just by nature of what I do, I try to help them with those things.
And eight oh six anyway.
We get reimbursed some of that for the election cost, but, I mean, do we have something in there for the IT services and?
I don't know.
That's just something to look at to.
I don't know, honestly.
Increase the revenue in that, that line.
So like, for instance, there's, there's not really anything in there for the courts either, right? But yet I help, I, I do help the courts because, I mean.
Stop. Not to be mean to them, but they can bring their own IT person in here.
It's, it's what I, it's what.
Oh man, you just opened up a can of worms on that one.
Well, I just believe in being transparent. I mean, you could talk.
No, you're fine. You're a nice guy and you just believe in helping and there's nothing wrong with that.
Capital computers and capital.
Them needing county parking spaces, you know? We keep supplying them with stuff and. All right, well. Make sure you grab a donut on the way out, you know?
Okay, but I don't, I don't understand this. It's three hundred and thirty.
I don't know what good it would do.
Two, two thousand.
But anyway, I would appreciate your consideration on, on the addition, the addition person. And then I did, you know, I just, if we do the COLA, that's what I've included, you know, as far as salaries go, so.
I haven't been down to your office in a while. Is Brian's desk still there with no partitions or anything, any kind of privacy wall?
No, Brent's desk.
Brent, I'm sorry.
Yeah, his.
Yeah, I saw your office. Nice and got a great big desk and fancy.
He's got, no, he's got, he's got.
Where's the two sixty-six at?
Okay, cause I think at one time he didn't even have that.
That's right. No, he's just me a desk.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say we need to.
I like it and I appreciate, you know, I appreciate, I'm like everybody else. I'll start out saying I appreciate everything that's done.
I haven't spent out of capital for his stuff. I haven't spent out of capital for his stuff. I've always been in computers.
Well. I don't have anything else to grill you about. Just say thank you. Yep, I think you're doing a great job.
Okay, well, probably earmark.
I don't do it on.
But I spend it out of computers.
And, you know, like I said, it takes a team.
We got Sam here to make you look good. He keeps breaking stuff.
He'll never find it.
He's texting now though, so.
Indirect cost study guy will never find it. Makes it happen.
You did something right there.
All right, I guess.
He tells me.
Yes, thank you, sir.
I took it out of computers.
Thank you.
It's time for you to get something free out of, out of chat.
Better grab it.
Yeah, there's capital. Whatever you give me, anything that's computer, I take it out of computers.
Uh-huh, computerization.
But I don't take it out of capital.
No, no, I, I, I call it computerization capital is what I call it. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I always, I always.
It kind of is.
So Greg, I mean, now, everybody had two hundred thousand in computer. In addition to that, just.
No, we kind of just take it off of that and that stays in there on that.
You know, your apartment, Greg, is gonna be.
Okay.
You won't even recognize it with everybody's off-bus. Everybody offering to do all kinds of stuff.
You might get to be, take a vacation.
I may be losing two more.
Oh, no.
I got one, I got one waiting in the wings for next year. They got one waiting in the wings for next year.
They're all looking for more money.
Well, they're not standing. They, they didn't say they're quitting, they're looking at another job. I'm not gonna say.
We're.
Okay. I, I, I'm not, we're still live, so I might be putting it out there.
Isn't this fun? Don't, don't you like this, Lisa? Isn't it this?
I'm glad you're up there and I'm back here.
December used to be, I kind of used to put out like fourteen trees and get out four hundred Santas. Now I just sit here.
Supposed to be a fun night, December. This isn't joyous.
My back's giving me a fit, so.
Oh, yeah.
Might go get a spinal shot today. Now I'll be better by down here. How the sheriff has three nine thousand in for his own janitor, which would take that away from you.
Okay.
And then Public Works is.
I'm all for it.
And I'm, so I'm, basically, basically what we can, what we can do is have you really, you know, watch jobs that are being done. And, you know, before we, before we sign up what is done. And you base, I mean, you would be doing more maintenance.
More managerial stuff than mine.
Yeah, yeah, which I think can be good, but it's, it's, um, all kinds of stuff, so.
Yeah, Sheriff does that.
I won't be seeing you out here on Sunday mornings shoveling snow or.
Hey, I, I won't miss it.
You gonna do anything when you're on?
I'm headed to Raleigh.
Yeah, get away, get away.
Drive tonight and thank you for, I'll send Lisa and Chuck, I thank you when you're back.
Yeah. That's so funny. They're very good.
Got a low round face.
Yeah.
Oh, sweet. That's a good healthy weight for a.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Oh, wow.
She was in the hospital for three months and then they had to take it by C-section. Literally laying her cross.
That conference tournament going on.
Those are hard.
Final fours going on.
He's a cutie.
Yep.
That's awesome. To see what he'll do on his own.
Everywhere for.
That's awesome. He's a cutie.
Thirty-five mile radiuses sold out. Cause they have the final four soccer men's and women's soccer.
That's the hospital.
Wow. One thirty-one expenditures, no revenue. All expenditures.
All overhead.
Yes, we are.
We, we are too.
We are too, yeah.
All right, we're a lot cheaper than here.
Yeah. Where do y'all start?
On vacation, start.
Yeah. So I'm gonna drive to Paducah tonight after I get off work. Make a five-hour trip, three hundred and twenty-eight miles.
That's what, athletic part of it?
Oh, that's not even half.
Where are you going to?
North Carolina. That's fifteen hours from here.
So you go to Paducah?
I go to Paducah, Dashville, cross forty over to Knoxville that way.
Versus like going sixty-four over?
Yeah.
Cause of where you're going.
If, if you look at the mileage, you can call it the mileage, it's twenty-two miles difference, which is nothing. And you don't have to pay the fifteen-dollar toll fee. That's the other thing. Fifteen-dollar toll roll for, I think it's like eighty-five miles. To me, it's a little high.
Where's that at?
It's on the down road. There's a tunnel section about that long. It's on sixty-four past, go through Louisville over to.
Gotta be out of Kentucky.
It's right over by West Vir- West Virginia.
They're doing all kinds of bridge construction at Louisville. It's, at least they were in June. It's a mess.
They still are.
It's a mess.
It's that sixty-four bridge.
Yeah, it, it. We were.
That's why I go, uh.
So long and then boys.
St. Louis. We were just fired, caveman, got it.
Down there late October.
Take that way three across.
You ever used to just stay in Louisville?
Yeah.
See, we, we had always passed through, so we went and stayed at the Seal Box. And so we, we pulled up and the FOP was having their convention. And so you talk about safe, there's like, I don't know how many thousand police officers, but that's a neat, clean city.
Tell me you're not a failure. I moved there from here, here from there.
Right, you know, Al Capone hung out there, so they show you the secret tunnels where he'd escape. Put your shoes in the door and they shine your shoes overnight.
Gregor, okay.
This is for me.
That and the brown.
I hear you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, what page are we on here?
Oh, I was gonna say sixty.
Fifty-two, five-two.
Did you break the computer already?
No, I was just pulling up some schedules.
O'Brien's doing it. I can explain. You don't wanna mess with the IT gods.
Mark and I sat down several times to over our, this budget.
Trying to put out fires here.
We all, Mark and I pretty well agreed with the numbers, I think, when we put in usage. Cleaning usages going up in all the buildings now that we're back from COVID. Uh, I know we're using a lot more toilet paper, hand towels, trash bags, cleaning stuff in all of our buildings, not just the courthouse. Carnegie's now that they've got the downstairs, we're using quite a bit more since I've got now, I think, fourteen or fifteen employees. Public defenders have gotten, um, even this building's using quite a bit more supplies. So Mark and I went down through, I think we've got a pretty good number for the fifty-three twelve numbers, which is our cleaning stuff. Maintenance, uh, which is fifty-three, uh, two eleven, I think we've got a pretty good handle on that with something majorly, drastically, a little wacky. Of course, utilities is, that all depends on what Amber gets for electrical increases, gas increases. Also depends on how cold the winter is, how hot the summer goes. So I think the numbers we got in there are pretty realistic. Have not heard anything on equipment service contracts to, I'm sure they're gonna go up, cause they, they always go up, they never come down. Which is our elevator service, our back floors, um, and all that stuff that we pay out of, fire extinguishers, that we pay out of that account. Salaries, I did not add anybody. I did do a cost of living increase for everybody. Also, uh, did a cost adjustment to get everybody. We talked about to get the starting wages up from fifteen dollars to eighteen dollars. I think I got it with the cost that way, when if you hire somebody eighteen dollars, I'm not putting them ahead of everybody else that's been here for years. And I did the cost adjustment to spread that out to get them away from that and to get them all over, making thirty-six thousand a year. Which I think is a realistic number.
Uh, COLAs, their request is over thirty-eight, thirty-eight four oh nine people on today.
Yeah.
So you did have the increase in the starting salary in here or you're?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the COLA plus you had the increase in starting salary.
I did a COLA plus an adjustment to move everybody up plus the starting, what, the sol- starting wages would be around seventeen seventy-five to start.
Okay, did you email that to us or?
I did not email this page. I just.
That would be in that overall salary schedule.
The one that you showed me, okay, so, that's.
If you go to like the first tab, one.
Under general.
Yeah, under general.
Okay.
The one thirty-one is.
Okay.
Like I said, I sat down with Mark and went over this numbers. I think you said it makes sense to work with that. Uh, I don't know what y'all were looking at, but, you know, to me, uh, you know, if you're gonna raise them, I think I heard yesterday or somebody said that you're gonna looking at making a minimum salary or something.
I was just kinda looking, does anybody make a less than thirty-five thousand? Should we consider bumping them up to, get them on thirty-five?
Yeah, that's.
There's not.
And we, we had talked about that earlier.
Do those right now, but, uh, overall, there are a lot of.
Yeah.
Pranger Center at fourteen seventy.
Well, well, okay.
But, yeah, and some of those are part-time.
In addition to what all the departments ask for, like, uh, Pranger, Sheriff, all, you know, asking for raises for like their civilian people, yeah, so.
Yeah, right now I've got six that are under thirty-five thousand a year before we do a, a COLA adjustment this year.
COLA would put some of them over. COLA would put some of them over.
Yeah. Uh, but in order to get a decent starting wage, I checked around with a few of the hotels, what they're paying. They're up around eighteen, nineteen bucks for a maintenance person with very little skills. You know, like you said, McDonald's and they're paying fourteen, fifteen bucks already, but ours for a car pushers paying sixteen. I just, salaries, wages have gotten out of hand, I think, but it is what it is and it's what we gotta pay. And that's probably why we haven't had anybody apply since July to replace the one. Any questions yet?
This is semi-related, but off tangent, uh, when, when would you say that Carnegie?
Uh, was up and running for the, uh, public defenders?
Uh, I think you asked me to do that, uh, adjustment sheet for square footage for them.
Uh huh.
I don't remember when I sent.
Well, that's where I was going with this, so you guys are already ahead of the game and there's a new, there's a new rent number for Miller County and Montot County?
Yeah, this year.
Yes, already.
During this year?
Yes.
It's current, yeah, right.
But it's still, it's still, it's kinda close to.
Oh, no. Oh, no. And it's based on the number of cases in each one of those counties.
Right.
And the populations. There's a particular formula.
But it's also based upon the number of square feet that we have in that building, right?
Either going.
Which has gone up.
Yes, and I've got, she's got that number already.
And I asked Tom, not Tom, I think maybe it was Tom, what the going rate is square footage for rent downtown area.
Right, okay.
It's never gonna.
How are utilities?
Both pay though.
Nine, so this is kind of our first year for.
Two oh nine, uh, we won't have a full assessment until March. Uh, so far, so good. You know, we got the heat set at sixty-seven degrees, which, and then we rolled back at night to sixty-four. Uh, summer, we, we didn't have the air conditioning set to a seventy-four, so I don't think we're doing too bad over there. I don't really get to see all the utility numbers all the time, so, uh, I know the water bill will be going up since we had to water the grass on there.
Yeah.
So, but, uh.
That was still.
Yeah.
So is the annex still the highest?
Yes.
Yeah.
Annex is still the highest.
Per square foot.
Per square foot, yeah, which is, uh, every, just about everything is gone. The LED light bulbs in this building. Uh, there's hardly any fluorescents anymore. Uh, there's no incandescent hardly at all. And I just don't know where, you know, granted, we've got a lot more computers in here now, we've got more refrigerators in here now, you've got more bathrooms in here now. I just, it's gotta be the AC, it's gotta.
Have we ever gotten that price?
I've got a meeting on the twelfth set up with him. Uh, they've had some issues in there. It's only a three-person company and they've had some health issues. COVID and everything else, so. Go sit down on the twelfth and see what he's got proposed and see if we need to change anything. Checked with Brady's. He's hoping to have the doors for the health department in two weeks from the manufacturer. Same way with the opener for Carnegie's. See what else, uh.
What about for Prenger Center, the?
All the two.
That are.
What email I got yesterday was, uh, they're hoping to have the compressors to us on Monday.
Oh.
They're hoping.
Okay.
Uh, that's from AC, AC Systems out of St. Louis. They're the new vendor for LG. And I was told Harry and Jeff the other day, and I gave it to you. Uh, I probably would never, ever recommend doing another one of these systems like we did at Prenger. Uh, we're just too far north. It works great in spring, summer and winter, ours in the fall, but without extra supplemental heat. They just, they run themselves to death. And they go from sixty hertz all the, they're allowed to go from a sixty-hertz system all the way up to a four-hundred-hertz system, which is really spinning fast to make heat. So they just burn themselves up. Yeah, I think I'll stick with the conventional four pot system or a split system like you have in your home. For anything, if I recommend anything for any buildings.
But we, we, and we have had some requests, the sheriff, you know, he, he has the janitor in his budget.
Yes.
Who would just be basically, that would be his sole job, so.
That's great. Uh, if we, if we do it, uh, I'm all for it. That would, uh, kinda help out with some of the maintenance issues. It would free up the maintenance people over there to do actual maintenance work and not just janitorial stuff. And that, we could also change their hours if we're not doing, uh, they don't have to come at five to clean. We can change the hours over at that building to more like seven-thirty or eight o'clock and then they can stay here till like four-thirty or five. And if, like, if it's one of these buildings or they're gone and say something happens in the courthouse, they can come over to the courthouse and take care of the problem. We still have somebody here on duty. I think that would work out great. I know Jeff had talked about, uh, to me yesterday about, uh, public, public works taking over the grassmowing again. So if they want it, they can have it, Jeff. I am not gonna bite you on that one. If Eric wants it, Eric can.
Well, one of his suggestions was talking to the city and seeing, having them clean our sidewalks.
That's fine.
And we'd have to see what that costs.
You still have to do the health department, you still have to do, uh, uh, Prenger and EMS, so.
Yeah.
So you gotta do sidewalks up to the buildings and stuff too? They just come through and hit.
They hit the sidewalks.
Sidewalk sidewalks, not your entries and stuff, so we still have some that we have to do.
Some we still have to do, but, uh, for the majority, they clean everything up to the buildings. So I don't know, and out, so I don't know how much, what they do here, so.
I don't think they would come, come up the walkway. I think they're basically just.
Public Works already is gonna do.
Oh, oh, yeah.
The driveways and then the walkways. We just have to take care of ourselves in between the buildings. That's, I think, we're still gonna have, somebody's gonna have to do something with a shovel, but you don't have to have the machine out there, so I think that's where.
So anyway, your, your whole department could really kinda change completely.
Dramatically. Um, I still like what Sheila and I talked about, uh, getting a filling if we do that with the main, uh, the sheriff, with him getting his own. We can still replace Phil Gerard's spot. That person could become a floater to learn everything. Spend a week in every building to help out with that person, learn that building, and if somebody goes on vacation, that, they can fill in for that person that's on vacation. Or if somebody gets sick, he can fill in for that, that building, uh, which makes sense. Now everybody knows every building and not just one person knows one building, that's it.
And I've got the one person still on the wings.
Yes, he saw me the other day.
Still got one open position?
Uh, well, Gerard, when he leaves.
So you don't have any open positions right now?
Technically, no.
Okay.
Technically, no, and I did not put it in for any, any increase for anybody, I mean, increasing another person, so.
So if we would add one for the sheriff, and then when we have somebody re-retire, which is imminent, but we wouldn't necessarily fill that position then, right?
I would like to fill that. That would be the person that could be, uh, helping out, A, if we need extra help at the jail. B, if we need, uh, somebody to cover a building, he could learn every building. Uh, everybody could learn every building.
So that would be my question then, is if the sheriff adds that position, would they be there to help as they are now with?
Maintenance.
Maintenance.
Yes, they could.
So we need to make sure that that would be the fact because I'm not gonna add a person over there and then just keep one over here. It doesn't make sense.
He would be over there, but if, uh, he would also learn every building with the cleanings.
Cause we're also eliminating, so we're looking at eliminating the snow, some of the snow removal. We're getting rid of, uh, the grass cutting, which is a seasonal thing, so it's, it's gonna, the scope of the work is being reduced, so.
But we still have every day chores we have to do, so.
Right.
I see your point, yes, so.
But we do that with having a guy there and.
What about across the street on Monroe? Are we, where are we on that?
We, we haven't done anything yet.
But if we pick that up, will we have a janitorial there?
Yeah, we would.
Okay.
Yeah, and we need to, I received a call from him.
We're still waiting for a number, aren't we?
No, he said he gave us the number. It's seven thousand four hundred square feet is the total, but he, the, the prices he gave us are.
We're talking about the Monroe House.
Yeah.
So we'll still need, if we take that building, we'll still have somebody cleaning over there.
I think that's all the questions I had on that, so.
I'm good.
And then while Greg's here, quick update on the tower clock. Got ahold of Norris yesterday. And, you know, he's, he's up there in age, so he's not gonna climb the ladder and get up there and go check the linkage and stuff, but he recommended undoing the power to the clocks and the hands, or the hands and the faces, and see if the clock actually functions. So that's what we're doing right now. Actually, when I went up there to look at it, Derek was up there, so we got it unhooked. And we're gonna see if it runs for a week, then we know it's up above it. Norris seemed to think it's in the linkage from the clock itself to the hands. And he doesn't think it's outside in the hands getting hung up. He thinks it's just in the U-joints up there, so. We've got four faces, so we might have to unhook one of those at a time, so the clock may have four different times or two different times at least at a point, so.
Kind of if they're chiming all different times.
It was chiming this morning at the right time, so everything was, but the clock up above wasn't right time.
Could drive.
Synchronize the hands with the downstairs, it's always been about five, ten minutes off, so I don't know if that's the linkage itself.
Yeah, I know, I know Derek mentioned somebody's been trying to adjust, cause you can adjust a pendulum to fix the time. And we probably need to have one person only mess with that, so. He might have just locked himself into.
He's locked himself.
Well, gonna lock himself in the tower.
You have a fancy title.
You have to put a hump in his back.
Yeah, make him a hunchback.
I didn't realize that the.
Quasimodo.
So this is off the, but have we gotten any requests for the living windows this weekend they usually use? Okay, I.
I have not heard, got anything from.
I, I haven't heard anything either, so.
New Tribune for plugging in.
Yeah.
Anything, so.
Okay.
I've not heard anything from, of course, our army employees they have left either.
Yeah, oh, well, Janet Ausley used to do it.
Right.
She's, yeah, okay, I just wondering, cause I, I haven't heard anything either.
All right, did you wanna go through the capital list?
Yeah, I'm here, my, my personal capital, since we're giving, uh, the grassmowing and the snow to public work. Last three items you can scratch off on my personal capital list.
Yeah, what page was that on?
John Deere, the, the pusher and tires.
Yep, I don't need that no more.
Yeah.
I am needing, uh, more storage bins and some shelving. I've been trying to get some surplus, but surplus hasn't had anything. Storage bins, I'm looking at are the ones where you put screwed nuts, bolts and label everything, keep everything organized.
I think we may have picked up a fifteen percent, uh, savings certificate from, uh, Surplus down at MAC. Did you get one of those? So if you're buying from Surplus, maybe you can save fifteen percent.
Surplus hasn't had anything out there. I, I check every week. I call out there, you got any shelving yet? You got any storage? Either the answer is no or it's already gone.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't want to add their door prices either.
Need to replace a few old ancient floor machines, that's, and a small ice machine is the other thing we'd like to have over there. Pretty, well, for my personal capital, uh, did you wanna go over capital for all the buildings themselves since I'm here?
So the small ice machine?
Just a little thirty-pound ice machine that we get ice.
For like your countertop? Just for?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, cause you got thirty-five hundred in here and.
I'm sorry.
I'm thinking you should take a zero off the back of there at least, for a small one.
Yeah, it's one that sits on the ground.
Yeah, I know, that's what I was thinking, so.
I got the price out of Granger, so I may have accidentally put a wrong number on there.
Okay, well.
Fifty dollars?
I, I'm, let me go back and look and see which one it was and I will let you know.
First off, I would be looking in the Granger book, cause we pay extra for that. If we Google that right now, it'd give you a discount. Well, if they're overcharging, you can get a discount. It don't make sense anyway. Countertop ice maker. Frigidaire countertop, hundred eighty-five, uh, hundred eighty-five dollars and six cents.
Is this for building use?
Uh, it's for my employees.
Forty-pound freestanding ice maker. I don't, I mean, you'd have to just, I know there's some that we could hook directly to an ice liner. You might have to, you know, dump water into it like you do your coffee maker, but.
Yeah, Black Friday, they had a lot of ice.
Christmas is coming up.
I don't know how big they were, but.
We'll find something, I mean.
Just the thirty-five hundred, I was like, what, are, are you needing it to ice down bodies or what? Okay.
Autopsies have gone up, so.
That's the other thing I told Jeff and Debbie, uh, one of the main, one of the companies we use for service sent me a letter. And their rates are going up almost thirty percent next year, so I have a feeling.
Can we edit?
They're not.
It's an hourly rate.
It's an hourly rate, yeah. They're going to one thirty an hour, so everybody's going up. Filters, I'm ordering this into the next week or the week after, because next year they're going up twenty-two percent on filters, so.
Can we order enough?
That's.
I mean, that's what we're doing with public works, is doing some of this ahead of time.
I'm ordering a big enough.
If you can save, yeah, if you can save twenty-two percent.
Yes, I am gonna order enough for the jail and the rest of these buildings, which should get us through here. Since we got the storage jump, I can do that. Capital for each building, um.
Do we have that list? Is that on the?
Uh, I'm not sure.
That's one you guys, I hear it's up. I mean, it's, part of it's in here, but you prioritize things A through D, you know, put As in here.
A lot of it's starting to become, the Bs are starting to become As, cause they've been on the list for so long. Of course courthouse, you know, we're gonna have to bite the bullet one of these years too.
Is it in our F?
No, I never got it. I don't think I got it counting.
I apologize if I didn't send it to you, Debbie.
So, okay, just go through it up there, I can see it.
You know courthouse, you know, we're gonna have to upgrade the electrical, the plumbing, the HVAC, carpet painting, lights replacement, elevator mods updated. And of course I put your clock bell on there. Carnegie's, a lot of this is, uh.
What's the driveway replacement?
That's coming off. I didn't, I don't take it off until it's done.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not on, it's not in the budget list.
I saw it was an A and I thought we were just doing, doing a lot of it, so.
I don't take it off my list until it's done.
Very good.
I haven't been able to take on courthouse projects, at least dollar-wise, got any requests because a lot of question marks and some of the very expensive stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be very expensive. Carnegie's, you know, the elevator mod update, I don't even think now with the new, uh, regulations for the elevator, we're gonna have to put a sprinkler in the bottom of the elevator shaft. Some other things they brought up saying the windows might not be allowed anymore, which I like, we got windows everywhere for elevators, so I'm doing some more research on that, cause they changed. I'm doing some more research on that, because they changed the price of that project quite a bit. Flooring and painting, uh, on the assessor's floor. Even upstairs for the public defenders are at.
So what I put on the budget was an elevator, stair replacement, because that was A.
Yeah, that's hard to be.
Driveway repair, forty-five.
Both of those should be coming off.
Part of.
Yeah, that's all coming off.
That comes off forty-five thousand, okay.
Yeah, the forty-five and the one-twenty is coming off this year.
Sure, that's all right.
Where's the awning? Is that over here?
The new awning.
Handicap?
Yeah, that lower door.
Oh, that's over at Carnegie?
So that comes off too?
That's Carnegie's, no, that's, yeah, that'll be, that'll be new. But I was gonna do that at the same time. The health department also requested new awnings out there for their two doors. Mature and bad shape.
You know the sheriff's looking for an awning too? Or he's detective entrance?
From the inside door.
Well, I mean, that, maybe that's on his.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, possibly we could bid all, all four of those projects and wanting to get a better price for those awnings.
Yeah.
Front doors, the health are already being done, uh, which.
So that'll come off?
That'll probably come off this year. Chris had asked.
Yeah, I didn't, I just put that, yeah, I didn't get it.
Chris had sent me a, a text about redoing all the exit lights and adding some, uh, ten patient rooms. Lighting in them, if that power ever goes out. You know, we probably can do that for eighty-five. We buy, we buy the lighting and have it put in. Which makes, and then the big ticket item out there is the outside siding and painting.
What is gen set?
Generator, which is gonna be, we're still looking at an April date for that.
It was gonna come out of a grant, I thought, but then, then I don't know if it got approved or not. We haven't paid it or anything.
The only thing I have turned in is the transfer switch came in for it, and I think I gave you the ticket for that. So the transfer switch is here, generator's not here. Then June, I'll, I know Harry and I have talked about some things down there, so.
None of that's in here because of the.
What's maybe happening. Right. Shepherds, we got to do the floor drain in there, and that's an A, and I don't know if twenty thousand, because we're gonna have to cut that whole drain out, because it's collapsing in, in on itself where the floor drain is.
That big center drain, through the whole thing?
Yeah, it's all starting to fall in.
The concrete itself?
Yeah, concrete's busting out, everything.
Driving over to, driving.
I don't know, you know, how long have they been there, I mean.
Yeah, how old is that?
It's probably original floor to the buildings there.
Four hours.
And then, uh, tear down the old jail.
Yeah.
The other one.
Did, did I get that figure right?
One eighty, one eighty-seven, one hundred eighty-seven thousand.
Versus a million.
One, we rounded it off to one thousand eight hundred eighty.
That's just demo, that's not any, any asbestos rebatement, removal, if there's any in there. There's electric we're gonna have to move, some water lines we're gonna have to move.
That's gonna have to be bid too, so.
Which is?
The one eighty.
Be back off state.
Is it? Okay.
And on city too.
In the city.
City's using them for.
Throwing out numbers out here.
I just said, it's gonna be a lot higher than that when you get to the plumbing, electrical.
Yeah.
The total project would be more than.
Yeah, he, actually, when we did the walkout round there, he said, you know, they wouldn't even come in until all the utilities are off and, and that's out of there, and so they're. So putting a hundred and eighty-eight in is really not good enough. It ought to be rounded up to like two fifty or something, I think.
Yeah, let's go less than.
If you want a closer number.
A lot less than a million.
Yeah, and I don't know if, you know, if that were a flat lot back there tomorrow, the sheriff would be saying, what about my Sally Port? So, just to.
Yeah, so we're.
I don't know if, anyway, I.
I think you're gonna be way north of that one eighty-eight, or even two fifty. I think, I don't think it's gonna hit the million, but.
I don't think it is either, but.
I think when you get to that inside, start tearing stuff out, you're gonna be surprised, because it's a lot of, you got, what, four levels there? We got three, four levels there.
I think we need an auction here, here right now, we'll just, we'll stop when we get to the last number.
So what did, when they were giving you a price, was that the shell?
They're gonna do the shell.
Or they're gonna go inside and take out every rock and the bars and everything?
Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah.
They will, they will set the, the exterior aside. Either that, or Eric's gonna want it for Phil.
Well, yeah, we're gonna save, save stone, so we can.
Well, yeah, those are, those are neat rocks, so they'd be good, we'll reuse them.
But you know, when you look, it, it doesn't match the courthouse at all. I mean, the jail was built nineteen thirty-six.
It's supposed to be different.
For sixty-five thousand dollars as a WPA project. It's, it's, but when you're, when you're out there looking, you know, the courthouse is a much wider stone, and this is more, but, yeah, use the, save the stone and, and face, face it with the.
Like I said, you know, it's projects that we need to talk about, to see what we need to get done next year. Spend some of the capital money wisely, but get some things accomplished and knocked out of the park, so. And like I said, the arbor money, we do fit for prayer, yes, a hundred thousand dollar questions out there, what we need to do.
Why would we ever consider batteries and keyboards and mouses capital?
That's a recorder's request. That's not under Greg's, I don't know if that's.
I know, I'm just going down this page.
It is part of like our overall show.
All right.
Computer upgrades, I think, which they actually got a lot, a lot of that done this year.
That would seem more like office supplies or something, but.
UPS, I had a reason.
Any questions?
No.
No, so I'll make a comment on the, the stores and stuff, I mean, I just, I think if you got something like that, go get it priced and organization and stuff over there, if it can help y'all do your job. If y'all got that stuff, because I know a lot of times if you, if you're fixing something, you can buy one nut for about two dollars, or you can buy a bag of five of them for less than that. And it, you know, to have that stuff around just makes sense for y'all to be able to do your jobs.
I said, they're not cheap, uh, cheap, looking through the magazines, they're six, seven for a nice tall Big Ben set, so.
Yeah, I couldn't get.
Don't look in the magazines.
Far for you.
Don't look in the magazines.
I just quit looking in the magazines, that, it's not cheap, but it's not exorbitant, I mean, I got that.
No, not county. Please don't buy much from county. We can't verify those vendors.
No. Before I buy it, I'll let you know. Capitalist is getting smaller, but of course, we're gonna, uh, some of the stuff will have to come back around.
Let's get some of the big ones off of there.
Yeah.
Just get some of the small ones knocked out.
Like, uh.
Carnegie was a good one, don't get done.
Yes.
I think HVAC and this is something that needs to be done sooner than later.
Yes.
My office was freezing cold Monday, and now it's nice and toasty again.
Yeah, it's just the units are just, actuators are going bad, a little flapper inside, which you have to kind of cut the line set apart to fix it. There's a copper, aluminum pins off the copper pipes, the heat transfer, the heating and cooling. But we'll figure it out.
Just like I'm there.
Anything else?
Nope. Have a good time, Mark.
I will send you pictures. I'm gonna be drinking margaritas.
About another month and a half.
Yeah. All right, if there's anything else, give me a holler.
All righty, thanks Greg.
Thanks Greg. Okay.
I did ask Judy to come over.
Judy, it's, it's noon, you gotta, well, if we.
Noon?
If we go back, back to Eastern, it's eleven, so we can, we'll take you at eleven.
Okay, Kylie, don't miss this.
Twelve o'clock somewhere.
Come up here.
I asked her to come up early, so.
Come up.
Yeah.
Principal calls, I listen. So I know I emailed these to you, but I brought a copy too, just, just as far as here's our, whoops. Page forty-one.
What page are we?
Forty-one.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, this is modification since our discussion, because we. Because. No, it's not, but I thought I made one for Debbie too.
Okay, I gotta have one for the clerk, so, but I will make a copy if you want, if you don't have Judy. Three, four, I did make one, what did I do?
I'll, I'll make sure you get one.
Debbie, do you know how I get the column titles up on top, so I can see them?
Want to split the screen?
Well, it keeps on the copy, paste, and different stuff, and now I've got the whole thing selected, so. I hit escape. If you hit it harder, it'll get back. No. There, no, it's, okay, so, I want. I want this up here, so that when I'm looking down below on somebody, I can see what the title is.
Click on that sixty-eight.
Click on the column?
No, this one, right here, sixty-eight, and now say, have you?
Free stop rope?
Well, you wanna, you want us, that to stay with it too? Yeah, you got, you got this.
Oh, no, it's my fault.
Yeah, say undo.
Okay, I got it figured out. I'll just clear this out, and then I'll go back in and do what we just did.
Yes.
Before I did the other thing.
Just do the top.
Don't save. Okay.
Yeah, Debbie, I'm sorry, I thought I had an extra copy, but I'll make sure you get.
That's okay. Should make sure.
Okay. Did you want me just to kind of jump right in there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Mark and I did meet, I mean, when I initially did my budget in August, to me, that's always difficult, because there's so much that happens between August and by the time we meet here. So, we did meet, we did not see eye to eye as far as my chief deputy, the salary I requested for a chief deputy. Uh, but after conversation, then I did understand a little bit of what your perspective was there. Uh, so I did make some modifications on it. And I first want to give a lot of kudos to staff, because I feel like they, these are hard times for everybody, but I just feel like we have worked really hard. Our revenues have been greater in the office than ever in the history of the recorder's office. This past month, we have slowed down, but what I was telling Mark was that when we're at four twenty-five to five hundred thousand a year, that's an average year, anything above that. It's a lot of extra work, and there's a lot of knowledge, skill, and a lot of weeds you have to go through really to get documents recorded. It's not as simple as it looks. They make it look easy, but they are just great, and I think they deserve all the perks that anyone else in the county would get. So, I was kind of just going over this with Mark, since he was newer. But my focus in adjusting what I did is highlighted on your sheet. If I start with the E one, after speaking with Mark, he had thought he was going to be able to recommend a four percent cola. When I initially did this, I advocated for a three percent memo. So if we did that, that would bring that, uh, to me, that internal adjustment would be satisfactory to me if she were to receive at least a three percent.
Four percent.
Right, a four percent is what you recommended, but when I did this, I did it with a three percent. Four percent would be great. Uh, but the, my main focus here is gonna be on E two, on the second page on E two, because I feel like when that position, when I started, and that position started at the same time that other positions did, for whatever reason, we started lower. I don't know how that happened or why that happened, but my person started lower. So if I advocate for anything, I think I need to have an adjustment there.
I, I will bid, I told you, I overlooked, I, I didn't catch that, it's, because I, I didn't know. I mean, being new, I didn't know some of your offices had, like, lead, yeah, chief deputies, I knew about that. I didn't realize offices like you and Steve and.
That was a new concept.
Lead deputies.
Yeah, that was.
I, I wasn't even thinking that way when I saw this, so.
Right.
Or initially saw it, but I understand now that if you compare your lead deputy to other offices, she is, she is low, and I, I would advocate for a, a larger increase. I would advocate for.
Okay.
Put in a larger increase in her, if I would like to, I apologize to you if I was seen, I would have kept that.
Sure, no, thank you, I appreciate that, so, no, I understand. And I appreciate that you are supporting that, so that may help over here. So, uh, but I know it is also very hard for everybody to do justification for what their employees do. You may not need a college degree, but I certainly see a difference when I have one that does, and I do have a lead that has it, and it sure does show. Her work shines. Actually, Kristen tried to steal her from me, that's how good she is. Kristen came to me and said, hey, I want your person, and I'm like, you can't have her, I just trained her. Anyway, she didn't want to leave, so I got to keep her, that's before Liz. So, and I also, you know, it is disappointing when you see more employees getting added, and you're kind of at, you know, still starting line when they're added, and they start higher than your employees. Then I do jump on what Steve was saying, that, you know, we need to kind of look at everybody instead of just select departments. Even though I try to track the budget for the last twenty years, and there is so many different ways to look at it, there's so many different ways, and I try to look at all aspects of it. So I do understand some of those increases in some of those departments, I mean, I, I get it. But I, I again will advocate for mine, because I feel like they have to have extra knowledge and skill for our office. And if you want to double check what I'm saying, check with our title companies, because we have a lot of eyes on us all the time of what we do, to make sure not just that we are doing it, but it has to be done right. And we take the lead. If we don't do it right, the assessor's job is wrong, the collector can't collect his rights, so that would be my debate if we ever needed to do that. But as far as what I heard in the commission meeting about the employees that received raises in the middle of the budget year, I think the date can be implemented based on what county commission decides. I think a written agreement is different than a statute, I think you can change the implementation date of that. Because I know when I started, you know, my budget was not left well, and in two thousand and nineteen and twenty, it took me two years to get everything adjusted. And I understand that the three percent has to be across board if it's a cola. But I also know, because I did it, and this would have to go through Jill, she's the expert here, that if you give them that three percent, but you change job descriptions, I know that you can also have that salary fall in line with that information date. I know that you can also have that salary fall in line with that information date. Because I've done that, and I wrote it all up, and I went through Jill, so we're not denying the COLA, we're modifying job descriptions and changing salaries based on that. Just a thought. Because you were talking about the implementation date of those salaries. If they get a raise mid-year, and now a 4% on top of it, how does that fall in line with other departments? That's what I was looking at. So, I could go on and on, but I'll stop and see if you have any questions, I just wanna make sure that you look at my yellow highlights, and that we look on the first page, that you do look at what I am asking for. If our office gets slow enough that we have to readjust something, I understand that, if we ever had to do that, I understand that would have to be done. I'm not a fan of saying, lose an employee so you have money to give others a raise. I don't see how that would solve anything, you're overloading another employee, then you end up coming short in the long run, so I'm not a advocate of that at all. Trying to think of anything else I could say that would make a difference. Do you have questions?
Didn't see anything I really had any questions on.
I think I backed into your 281-081 by using your schedule here, and then putting in your salary at the current salary you have, I was in within a few bucks for that.
I'm sorry, what did you say, the 281 salary?
The 281-081 that you have.
Yes.
If, if I take your page 2 of 2, your bottom line salaries for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 people, add in your salary at current to get the office, all right? I, I'm within 100, well, like, $20 or $30, so, okay, I see where that number came from, that's just all I'm saying there.
Okay.
I wanted to ask Mark maybe to explain the differences in, down in the other services from 94 to 102. The, the, other services and charges, the total.
Oh, okay.
The 94 was what Judy brought to you, and you've changed it to 1024, and maybe just the logic behind that? I guess I can see what was changed, it was reimbursement, I guess.
I, I, I did change some of the revenue numbers up at the top.
Well, you did that as well.
Based on what the.
Actual.
Actual is this year, so I, I thought your state reimbursement, recorder user fee was low at 16, 658, 'cause we're, we're gonna hit 20, almost 25,000 this year.
Right.
So I upped that.
Yeah.
That was the biggest difference, that, that's really the main difference right there.
Okay.
I think those are projections, and it's hard to get it.
Yeah, that's about 9,000 there, yeah, that, that's the main difference. And then, four or five revenues up there at the top, all go out, exact amount, there, the.
In and out.
State user fee, mobile housing trust, children's trust, recorder statutory pool, whatever's budgeted revenue, that's what you're budgeting as expense, 'cause that's, that money's in now. That, that's not our money to keep, that's, that's just money.
In and out.
Collecting for the, that all goes to the state, all, yeah, all those.
Well, yeah, except.
These all come back out right here.
Dollar for dollar?
Yep.
Yes.
A lot of them do.
Well.
For the five, there, the only we keep is your general, your.
Fees?
Basic fees.
Okay, so what, what happened that the fees?
They're coming in lower this year.
Right, yeah, they are, currently, we are at about 26,000 for the year, I mean, this is just November, but.
I'm talking just general revenue fees.
Oh, right, they are coming in lower.
43738 is coming in, and what I can tell is 275,000 this year. So I, I put your estimate for next year, 280,000.
What's happened, why is the 275, that, that's a very low number compared to the budget and.
I assume with the, with the real estate market slowing down.
Okay, okay.
With COVID, we worked, and had about 200,000 revenues more, greater, in those 19, 20, 21 years, and now we're slowing down, and we're getting back to more of a standard workflow, so I, I think that's correct.
Okay.
Those were really high, if I go back, those.
Is a lot of that due to the housing market too, though, slowing down?
Yes. Interest rates going up, nobody refinancing.
Which affects the housing.
Your fees are just slowing down.
They're, they're down, right.
Might have more merit.
They're going back to normal years, not that we're slowing down to where it's a deficit for us, but it's going back to a normal.
Pre-COVID levels.
Yeah, pre-COVID levels, function, so.
Okay, I, well, yeah, that's fine, I understand, conditions change, but sometimes I just look at the bottom number, and let's just look at 21 activity, at the end of the, end of the day, Judy had a profit center.
Yep.
Of $52,000, right? I'm in the very first column, bottom number.
The net revenue versus appropriation.
The bottom number in the first column. 52,237. You with me?
Yes.
Okay, so, she had a profit center. This year, it's gonna be a $46,000 loss, and I'm just, sometimes I just look at the bottom line, and say, what, what happened between year one and year two? Well, she's explained it. We had an anomaly.
But you can also look at that salary too, that salary with the 5.5 made a big difference.
Okay, right, on the expense side.
Yeah, the actual salary in 2021, without benefits, is 233,000, it went up.
281.
3,000, and yeah, now we're at like 281.
Between that and, and the reduced revenue is, is basically the explanation.
Yes.
So we, so it's been explained.
Yeah, that net difference is really good to look at, in all departments.
Right.
Yep. And by the.
Right.
But it's equity, or did you add to the reserve, or did you deplete the reserve? Well, there's explanations, fine.
And you know most of the revenue is all statutorily set, so it becomes very hard to keep up with that. I mean, keep that same level on the expense side, when stuff goes up way higher than our.
I don't expect Judy to go out and advertise to get more business.
Yeah.
It's either coming, or it's not.
Right, right. And the fees that they charge are pretty much set.
Yes.
There's only a few fees that you guys control, that you can change throughout the years.
Good.
Yeah, there's no like inflation factor in the fees, they're just set column now.
Yeah, I never expected that we would have been as busy as we were in 20 and 21, I mean, it was crazy. I've never seen that, I've been there 20 years. So, and we also have coming down, you know, they keep talking about changing, there's a, it's called Daniel's Law. Changing our function in the office, they wanna start maybe adding some closed records, and if that happens, there's gonna be a lot of work, and a lot of changes made in the Recorder's Office. They wanna do closed records for certain people, like judges, and maybe attorneys, or, and then you have to get an affidavit to actually see that record, it's just all a big discussion, they've been talking about it for two years, but this year, when I went to MAC, the Recorder's part of it, they were talking that it was getting closer to maybe implementing that change, so.
So is that gonna be going back as well, or just starting?
That's the question, they're trying, yeah. I don't know how they can go back, that would be.
Yeah, I don't know how you go back.
But some people want to, and others say it's impossible too, so I don't, I don't know.
I would think you'd better say, okay, come January 1, we're gonna, we're gonna initiate this.
This would be a statutory change.
Yes.
What's the purpose of?
The purpose of it is, I guess there was a judge who did a ruling in another state, and some criminal went to the door as a FedEx person, and her son answered the door, he was shot and killed, and then her husband came to the door, he was shot. So it's to protect, I don't know how you can totally protect it, because you can Google anything, anything you wanna find, I can find it, but it's to protect and secure those records.
Well, they used to do that with the assessor's office too, for, like, police officers. GIS was hidden for a while too, I don't, I don't know if it is necessarily anymore.
Well, just the information that you can get on GIS.
But if you Google it, you're gonna get.
Get it anywhere.
Same thing, so I, I don't really understand the whole purpose behind it, by hiding those records, it's gonna be harder for title companies, they're gonna go through extra steps, we're gonna go through extra steps, and in the end, they're gonna get the records anyway.
Yeah, if you wanna find some.
They're gonna find it. So, but that's what we're looking at potentially for 23.
And maybe you can touch on your capital that you were.
She gets the mouse.
I'm gonna have to check out that price, because I, I've seen mice that were cheaper than that.
Then you gotta feed them.
Initially, there's a lot in there, but a lot of that was already done.
Yes, I think we are good.
The computers.
Yes, I think we're very good on our capital purchases. The only thing that has been brought forward from, since we went ahead and did the data conversion, you know, Brian has been working with us as far as our monitors, and our new software, and our server, and I think we have all that taken care of, so really, that's modified already. So, you know, the kitchen sink, that's, we've been doing that for, ever since I've been down there. I think we got stuck with having someone do it, and before, when I looked at doing this two years ago, I found a piece up Lowe's that was a really nice countertop that they were going to sell really cheap, but I didn't have anybody to install it. And then, everything changed, and so it's still on the books.
You have some 2014 model PCs in your office?
I did, yeah, we're changing that, but yes.
Okay, so that.
That has been updated.
Oh, so you don't need three.
Let me check with Brian, I'm not sure if that purchase is there, we don't have it installed yet, I still have it, it's in the scan room, so I still have that.
There's a P L out there.
One. Yeah, still have that one. And we haven't surplus anything yet, we've replaced, but we haven't surplus anything yet, I don't wanna, any of our old computers or monitors, because I don't wanna let anything go until I know we don't need it. I have a couple people. I think there's a couple people kinda eyeballing our PCs and our monitors, and I'm like, just hang on to that thought till we.
Throw out the cord.
Yeah. Well, I like to keep a couple of them as a backup, in case something goes out.
Those old servers make good boat anchors, but other than that, that's about what.
I think we can get Elon Musk to bring a kitchen sink, a sink in, two, I mean.
Two what?
Didn't you see when he walked into Twitter?
I was like, I'm not following this one.
He was carrying a sink.
Okay, all right, I was meaning the picture with that.
We just asked you to bring a sink?
I didn't picture Elon Musk with a sink, so I missed that one.
No, every time I think of that, I always think, oh, maybe Jeff will put this in for us, but I know that he.
Put a little Tannerite in the budget, we can take care of them old computers. Yep.
The only thing I would also like to ask is if, when you start talking about my budget, 'cause last year I was trying to pay attention, and was interrupted, and then I heard Recorder's budget, and I go right up here, I'm like, okay, what are we saying? Just, I would like to be here, if that's possible.
Well, absolutely.
Everybody's invited.
I actually think it's better, because then we don't get.
It's open to the world, so we can't restrict.
Knowing when my name is being called is the hard part, not knowing when that's happening.
We could send the sheriff down to get you.
Great.
All right.
I could use him, a personal escort.
Well, I'm just gonna tell you, I can say no with you in the room anyway, so. I've been practicing at home, I stay in front of the mirror, no.
No?
Yeah, that's it.
No?
Sink up for her, we, it wouldn't still be on, Kathy.
It'd take about 20 minutes probably.
Probably.
Okay.
Unless there's plumbing involved, I think.
Okay, 25. We'll turn our own building and replace them on.
You want water too?
I want water too, at least I know.
My God!
I know if he does it, it's done right, that's, that's a good thing.
She wants a sink, and she wants water.
So, if you would please just do consideration of the highlights that I have on the page for the E2, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
So.
We can do our budget if you want.
Do we wanna do the commission?
Yep, I can, I'll find out if Don didn't.
Oh, good, okay, then why don't we, you wanna do commission?
Sure. It's on page 36, here all's budget.
Where's my no button? Here we go. No.
So, we'll skip over salaries for now, but we'll go into the supplies, we're trying to coordinate purchasing, HR, and us come out of this budget. So, meetings of travel, if you guys see anything out of line, if you want something different, there's, not really much in there, so. If you don't have any questions there, we can go back up to salaries. I did request some additional salaries for some of our employees. Again, just to keep up with what's been going on in the last year, and, which I think our department has a play in all departments, we have, we have to know a little bit about every, every department, from the HR to the purchasing, to the financial assistant, and from Melody, the office supply part. So, I will advocate for our people, and I know you guys do too, but sometimes we kinda get lost in the shuffle, so I want you guys to keep us out front too, depending on what you do. We did, I did share, I think with Harry, job descriptions and job titles, comparing ours employees to Boone County, and to the city of Jeff, which a lot of other departments did this year. They compared, they got their market price up for their positions, and that's all I was asking for our people too, was to get our market value up to where it should be for our people.
Well, for so many years, all we were giving you was COLA.
Yes.
Can I clarify, I think you said nobody in this office got more than COLAs for a long time, and do your employees get some additional raises about two years ago?
Finally, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, but before that, it was just COLA.
And I think that was on that spreadsheet I sent you.
Well, it's been the same way countywide though.
I mean, that's fine, not that made any difference.
And it was to keep up with what was doing.
I was just, wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
But let's clarify that countywide, it's been that way.
Yes.
In most departments, there's been some adjustments lately that we've done, and so.
But this year.
I think we're playing catch-up now, some of them we did mid-year.
Right.
And.
Not for our department, but yes, other departments, yes.
So now, I think people are seeing that, and it's only fair that they ask for some kind of adjustment as well. And so the adjustments that are on the file that you have for us to look at on F.
Yes.
That's each department's elected officials ask.
Yes.
So, and that's included in.
I did ask for a little bit more than that, but I had Harry review it for me, and him and Mark talked, so that's where we, that's where we landed.
Right.
That's rich.
The initial request, you just put in like a lump sum in adjustment, not, you, you didn't give me a schedule.
Well, I did to.
Put in each, for each employee, but then Harry gave me a schedule, kinda showing.
Yep.
So then, out of curiosity, where did your number come from then?
I had so much per person, I had two different options, I was leaving some.
You didn't just take a round number and put it in, and go, hey, let's just get it up this amount, you took.
I mean, I'm just.
Boone County and worked backwards?
Essentially, yeah.
Or did you take the average?
I took the positions, and looked at each one of them, compared to Boone County, and compared to the city.
'Cause, I mean, yours are down to a penny.
Yes.
And other ones are at even thousands.
That was me, I was doing that rounding, I think.
Okay, so that's what I was asking, where that took like.
And I was going like this.
Grabbed like an average of these counties, or city, or whatever, and worked backwards from it?
I was using something called SWAG.
Okay. So, the end number's a rounder number than the adjustment?
And it could be because of the 4% too, I don't know if you're just looking at the total.
Well, the adjustment was on top of the 4% it looks like, and brings it up to 62.5, or 70, or 39, or whatever it is, instead of 39 dollars, or 39,045 cents, so.
If you see those round numbers in there, I think those came from me.
Okay.
And I think our department. And I think our department has taken on quite a bit, from the cares to the ARPA, there's been quite a bit thrown on us. That was never in our job descriptions. And again, each one in the department has helped and they've all been a willing partner. Sheila's been a willing partner with the ARPA and so is Jessica with getting the documentation and so is Chelsea getting the stuff for that. And then, of course, Melody picking up the slack for everything else that comes through this office that changes from day to day.
And you are the most important.
No, 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 never.
And so that's why you're staying another four years.
That would be a no.
Yeah.
That would be a no.
So.
But.
I think our, our office does, does a wonderful job, except for that. And it's not a big office.
Nope, it's not a big office. And we do work well together, so I'm very thankful.
Let me pre-qualify this. You all have done an excellent job with the ARPA money. It's been a team effort. There's been a lot of stuff thrown in your laps. But we've also added an HR person.
Yes.
We added another person in the auditor's office. So we have tried to take some of the stuff off of your lap.
Right. Well, with the whole changeover in the auditor's office that has changed.
Whether you relinquish it or not is on you.
Wow.
Hey, I'm not gonna be any easier on you than I am anybody else.
Well, I know. ARPA, I was up here one Sunday and she was here already and she was here when I left.
Everybody that's worked on Sundays, raise your hand. I mean, everybody that's listening right now has got their hand raised. There's people that do it all the time, so thank you, but.
Yeah. Well, and there are some that have been compensated for ARPA too and some that have not, so. Very well.
All right, I didn't pick on you too much, did I?
No, no. So, anything else within that department? If you guys have any other meetings of travels that you wanna go to that is unusual for, for this year or past years? We've got some stuff in there for, obviously Jill for training and Sheila for continuing it and so.
Our commissioners' training this year will be at Margaritaville as opposed to.
Columbia.
The Executive Center. So, I think Harry and I are saying maybe we will spend the night. You actually can get more.
Don't say it that way.
They just need one room?
No. He, he gets the good rooms. I asked you to find me a good room.
We did. We told them.
And then they go, oh, we're gonna stick you down the anchor wing. And I'm like, no. I said, I mean, this, this guy.
We did it the day after they came out.
This guy, he just, I, I just said, no. I said, I want a room in this building.
Good job.
Well, we're just, we're full up. I said, I don't give a. But, but.
And you guys keep in mind, you're gonna have to discuss your department heads too. I mean, they may or may not have put any money in their budget for their, I can think of one department head that did, but I can't. Yeah. So.
Yeah.
So you have to think about that.
Who has, yeah.
Cause you make that decision too, obviously.
Your, your laptop is dying, is that right? Did I hear that?
Yeah, it's my computer. I think, I think that Brian had.
The hard drive?
New ones ordered for all of us.
Does, does that go on here anywhere?
No, the purchases are already issued. So it's coming out this year.
Okay.
They're, I forget how old they are, but.
I'm not getting one now?
Monday, Monday again.
He said I'm on my own.
It malfunctioned and, and that's the second time in three weeks.
You know, you're such a high user of electronics. I can see how you wear things out a lot quicker than the rest of us do.
I think probably my predecessor uses it a lot more. But I am, I tell you, I, I check my emails every hour.
We can go to page 46, which is 127.
I'll just draw real quick. There's still a schedule for cares act in there, cause there's 2001 actual number. The statute says you gotta show your budget plus the previous two years, so that, that's just there for.
That's on page 37.
Statute, yeah, that's 37. That's why, that's so there.
And then that will be actual what's out there.
Well, that is 76. I, I just wanted to go, just wanted to get a couple other things here, just clarifications.
And what's the other one?
38, the ARPA, that's all gonna change, cause when this printing, there's been more projects.
That were approved.
Approved, so, so, you know, the final on that will change. Not significantly, but it'll certainly change though. And we do throw the domestic shelter fund there on page 39 in your overall budget, so.
And that's definitely statutorily, so there's not much we can do there.
Yeah, that's the domestic shelter fees that we send racks every year. They're the only ones that apply.
That's right.
Just.
If you got any questions.
Clarification for the rest of the schedules in your, in your budget.
When is the autopsies coming out?
They come out of the next one on page 46. Oh, no. No.
Oh, we don't really have a budget hearing for coroner, do we?
No.
Which, I don't need to.
Yeah. Comes out of the corner of the budget.
Since I just got the letter where it's going up.
We can look at that one if you want.
Autopsy, I'm just wondering where, where it was.
143.
Page 77.
We can look at that, Sam, cause really that's always been under Yurall's control.
Yeah.
We did up the amount.
Yeah, we did have elected coroner, we had appointed medical director.
Right. And you guys.
So the sheriff can actually, he becomes the coroner if, if he just left.
If he's not there, if he's not available. So we did up the fee that we paid professional services for the year 2022 for that one. We hadn't increased that amount that we paid that doctor for quite some time. So, basically that's it. Autopsies, we did get a letter saying that the fee was going up per autopsy. But again, we don't know how many we're gonna have to pay for in a year's time.
That's like the pauper.
As of the end of September, we only spent 15,000, so.
And so that's like the pauper funerals. I mean, kinda one year, they inundated us.
But we do pay for the bond too on that. So, speaking of that bond, Sam, we better get yours renewed for four years.
Yeah, I was just curious where.
Oh, yeah. Did you renew all the, isn't there that package deal?
I'll have to look back if it was, if it's something we bid out the last time.
Yeah, cause I wanna be legitimate.
I'll ask Jessica. We did, I thought, but then some people wanted to go where they wanted to go.
Oh, people, right. I know mine's.
Who's vendor?
T bolt Insurance, T E, T E E P L E. Oh, that's not who.
I don't think so.
Okay.
No. So people were going different places.
Three, four, five. I'm on T bolt, but I don't understand.
And maybe, I don't know. I'll have to look. Okay. So then you guys are in charge of 140, or I'm sorry, 46. General accounts, 127. Basically, that's anything else?
Page.
About 46. Anything else that falls? And this is where we balance out the carry forward and then contingency. So, again, anything from stock insurance to.
We added the property tax and the 60% size tax rollback in this category. Took that out of collector.
And use taxes in there. So, basically this department is under your control. If there's anything you see that, on the revenue side, you know, this is where all the transfers come back in. The admin fees that we charge the different departments.
Could I point out the 911 prepaid wireless fee? That's something that, somebody between sheriff and you guys.
An EMA started.
What that money should be spent on. We haven't spent any of that money.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's the.
It's a fee we started getting in.
21?
2021, or maybe a little bit before that, but it's about 20, 20,000 a year.
Do we wanna put it on the expense?
To, yeah, I think I did. I added the sender on page 47, the last item on contractual services. The 106,740 is what we've been accumulating so far, including, and then including the additional 20,000 that I've estimated. So actually, that's probably been around for more than two years.
Yeah, I guess it wasn't recorded in here, so it wasn't painted. So.
So we need to.
Is that specified what it can be spent on?
Well, it has to be 911 related. I mean, I think Sheriff Wheeler was talking about, he thought you go to some specific equipment or related to 911. We, we can look at the statute of that again.
Well, I think as we get into creating a dedicated 911, it won't be a problem to.
Where do you have that contract services?
On page 47. It's the under contract, the section on contractual services.
Yeah, and miscellaneous.
The last one there says 911 system.
Oh. Um, let's see, what else is in there? This is the retirees, health, in and out, workers comp. We kinda use this as a pay here and then we bill the departments. That we can bill. We don't really bill all the departments in GR. Unemployment claims just for general fund employees, which we've been very lucky. We pay as you go type thing. This is the audit cost comes out of here, extension, economic development. I mean, you can talk about those subjects if you want, as far as contracts or. Obviously, we don't pay those out until we have a contract in hand. Animal shelter, what we pay the city. So on top of what the sheriff tries to pawn off, this is what we pay the city.
We've got the, could I point out the, well, extension, university extension services. They requested the same amount as the last two years, 107, 107,144 hours.
Yeah, and I don't think they've gone much up over very many years, so they've been able to keep their spending steady somehow.
If you look at the soil conservation, right above 911, we've been budgeting 5,000 for them. They asked for 7,500 this year. I recommended a, like maybe a 10% increase from 5,05500.
What was their reasoning?
See if I can pull it up. My mind saved that.
That economic development is 120 and 5, right? 120 for JC Rep and 5 for the fireworks salute? Okay.
I was trying to think when you were talking 5, yeah.
Is that what it was? I didn't remember right offhand.
The JC Rep?
It's 120?
120 and 5. 5,000 for salute.
Okay. I was thinking we had more in salute for some reason.
I think that's it.
Now, we tell you, we start, when I came in, it was 25,000.
There is the letter up on the screen.
Sure.
Well.
I can read Dear Mr. Ruth there, but.
Let's see, this is probably, this is probably the reasoning here. This past fiscal year, Cole County spent approximately 200,000 in cost share assistance to landowners in the county on their erosion control projects. Well, it says their funds for the county commissioner used toward the salaries of personnel and for information, educational related activities, helping inform Cole County landowners what programs we have to help them, so.
I've not ever used them. I can't tell you anything about it, so I don't know.
And so what we pay, is that their total budget?
No.
Oh, no.
No, okay. So it's, it's, yeah.
So do they, I mean, they're a district, so do they get, do they have a tax?
Statutorily, I thought we could give some.
Who are we talking about now?
So.
So I'm wondering, I have no idea. I could do some research. Let me, I'll find out more.
Cause it's like the extension. We're, we're not required to give as much as, as we do to the extension.
Right, the statute says we're required, yeah.
We get a report from them every year what they do. They do soil tests to help with our 4H programs, FFA.
And we normally do.
Master gardener's nutrition programs.
Are you still on that, aren't you?
Yeah, so I mean, that's, I'm not advocating for or against increasing this or not. I just, I don't have a clue, whereas extension I do. So.
I'll find out more about.
It's not, it's not that much of a difference, but curious.
Yeah, and I don't remember ever having them come up. And I know they've been entered before, but I don't remember what exactly we had them doing. If it was for budget or if it was just in general, they had some other presentation.
Yeah, it seems like they talked about what they actually do for the county.
I don't know if there's federal funding, cause I mean, there's a.
Might be a good time to do that.
ASCS office, which is soil conservation district.
I think they're down here on the east end by Boggs Creek, by, they have an actual office.
Yeah, Boggs Creek.
Yeah.
It is a district, so I assume it's some kind of tax funded or some, some type of.
I'd have to look and see what.
I don't believe it or not, it's been here longer than me. No comment out of you, Jeff.
I'm just leaving it alone.
Yeah, no comment out of you.
It's almost Christmas time.
We did have a request for that Civic Plus to be changed in that professional services, so, yeah. Insurance, that's, that's gonna be, coming in here shortly. I've been working with Jeff Nod on the renewal. Again, a lot of it with travelers, if that's what direction we had, a lot of it is picking up higher deductibles to make the premium easier for, to accept, even though premium to keep going up. Our claims obviously are, keep going up as well, so. But here's where we may wanna set aside some money for a deductible buster. Because I know they, the hail and wind, you know, we're going from a $50,000 deductible to almost a 10% of the cost up to, I think it was 300,000. So if that would happen, you know, we'd have to lay out that money right away, our part, you know. So I will defer all that, but you can see that's a big dollar amount as far as expense goes. I do bill out the sheriff for his vehicles, his building. Yurall's building, don't get me wrong, it's Yurall's building, but the cost of that coverage, I, I put out to the law enforcement center. I put it in juvenile cost is. And the health department for nursing EMS pays their part for liability insurance, their vehicles and the buildings they occupy. And then, what's the other big one there? Postage, obviously that is the postage machine here. Anywhere from everything pre-sorted to the packages that go out. I show that monthly report. I think I send it to you guys. What goes through that machine and how much that cost is. It's very high sometimes and of course postage keeps going up. And that does not include the tax bills that get sent out. That's paid directly out of the collector and the assessor's fund.
Not this part, but are we, is the library still paying us for those places against the building?
Yes.
Okay. Then one day I was over there and there was nobody parked there and I thought, maybe we, you know, we had taken the customer parking away. But I think we meant for them to still have those up against the building. But when I was here, there wasn't a single car.
They've got all the outside parking places, so.
Yeah.
We probably need to send an email out and just remind everybody, cause I know they did have a problem for a while. Some of our employees were parking and walking across the street to go to work, so.
Yeah.
And they're paying for those spots, so we need to stay.
Well, yeah, that's, but yeah, I just didn't know, cause.
I mean, the last time we received was October, so I mean.
And one day there wasn't, I might check with her and make sure.
I, I think that she had put some signage up for the patrons to use the spots against the building. I would rather it had been all reserved parking and no public parking, cause that's where we run into problems, is the public come in, maybe use their spots. They don't care. They'll park on an empty spot there.
Well, those spots had been for staff.
They had been, but I think they changed it and got some spots behind chambers, so.
And as you can see then.
We're gonna have to maybe do something different whenever we get finished over here and see how many spots we have.
Yeah.
And then further down, you can see that there is a placeholder for capital. That placeholder's been there for a few years and continues to stay there. So that 5 billion plus the 4.2 in sales tax, in my mind, is what you have to use for capital. And then you could always. And then you could always get into that contingency if, if you see fit.
Basically, the capital and the contingency is the approximate amount of what we should carry forward.
Yeah.
Sixteen million cash from this year to next year, so.
If you guys have any other questions on one twenty seven?
Nope.
Nope.
Mark, what is that miscellaneous? I forget what that is. I think that's just a hodgepodge of a lot of stuff, isn't it? I think it's those in and outs that we receive and that we got to send back and stuff.
Flat books, expense.
Does my great Christmas presents.
They come in handy sometimes.
Oh, I know. I was impressed.
I can't get the notes to come up for some reason. Oh, there they finally did. Oh, that hazardous waste agreement that we have with the city, that comes out of there, and that's about fifty five hundred. Jeff, I usually ask you about that every year, whether we want to continue that or not, so. That's in the miscellaneous out of that sixteen.
Yeah, we're still doing that.
Yeah, we're still paying them.
So, as far as I know, it's still well attended to. We could check with the city, get an update on that, on how many people come to it, but it is still used.
That was a grant funded thing at one point, and then the grant kind of fizzled away, so.
How much was it?
Five thousand, five hundred.
That basically pays for hauling the stuff off. So we got the grant, and we got the pad, and the city provides a place for it, and they actually work it.
They man it for us, yes.
Yeah. We used to have somebody there every other month or every other time it was open, and I think we've gotten away from that, which is actually nice, not having to mess with it.
All right. Then we talked about the health insurance fund. It's on page forty eight yesterday. But the contingency and carry forward is the balancing mechanism to, for the whole GR. So depending on what changes you make from what Mark had and what that cash actually comes in at, those numbers will change. Is there any other funds that, besides capital?
Yeah.
What time is it? Eleven o'clock, so.
Mark is here.
Oh, was he here?
He was.
Yeah.
You know what? I don't think he ever got a copied actual budget. I need a quick break.
Don't worry, I told him no this weekend, and it's all been like.
You got, you get the hot seat, Mark. You got, see, this way we can throw stuff at you. Here closer.
Have you seen this at all?
Oh.
She got taxed for beat him the other day, said, maybe you want to come to the.
Three more years.
I saw.
I don't want to. I keep talking about it. I hated people. Judge? Me, it's a goal.
Remember you?
No.
You know, we keep getting, I keep getting asked, since they had that article about the hanging down there at the police station, whether we can bring hangings back.
The answer, no.
You never know what's.
Maybe I'll just ask again.
Well, that article really stirred up.
Yeah. How's it right? Fisher, are you doing good?
Who is that?
Marky. I mean.
I have one here and I have one there.
We have to be officially correct.
Well, I can't do that.
We have to be officially correct.
Oh, no. Judy, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, she didn't have her glasses over here.
They don't look like rags.
Do you have your budget yet?
Mark's getting a copy of it.
Okay. I was waiting for him till nine thirty. We don't think Sharon coming here, so I'm going back there.
You do need to look at this, then.
So, what is your business?
Construction.
General construction.
Remodel work and stuff. He's got us on a nice one today. There's not even enough room for three of us in there.
Hey, it's inside, complain.
I do with him, this with him.
Hey, I'm just looking for a glasses case.
Oh, Judge's got him. He might have just took him downstairs.
He was going to bring him down too.
Okay, thank you.
Just helping Jeff till I come back.
Jeff needs a lot of help.
We built the house, and that's one of the last things he just has to get done. My husband just takes his time. So you know the wife, she's like, well, I can hire that out, and he's like.
I never, I don't even have mine done yet. This is my last extra copy, so you can keep it, but that's your page right there.
Oh, Mark, I can, I have a copy right here of that name.
Oh.
Do you need the book?
Oh, he went and got another.
No, I got, I got, no, this is my copy. That's an extra.
That's the last copy?
Yeah.
What page are we on?
Sixty.
Sixty-three.
Forty-sixty-three.
I guess I probably know more about this budget than anybody else, since you weren't really part of the original. Basically, we, we got Judge, Judge Beadham, his, he mainly, this is mainly his request, and we met with him at a commission meeting, what, in mid-August? Because by statute, the court's budget requests need to be in by then, and the commission cannot legally change any of those numbers after August fifteenth, so. So the, the commission pretty much agreed, agreed with the, the requests from Judge Beadham. So these numbers reflect that. It starts with, you know, your, your, the revenues, the fees that you generate, that the court generates for the county. Estimate that to total about a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred. Get a little bit of child support enforcement reimbursement from the state, nine hundred and forty dollars. Then in the appropriations, the, the, the big thing there would be like the part-time salaries that the county pays. That's the first one. Judge Beadham requested, and we, the commission agreed to, sixteen thousand, which is higher than what it normally is, but due to having a new official taking over, you, as of January first, we, the commission agreed to add some leeway there in case you needed some extra part-time help to, for whatever you need to help, help out transition, yeah, so, okay. I mean, if you look at this year, they've only, projected only use about sixty five hundred in part-time. Well, that may go up. We.
Was that the way that we're supposed to be recording files, pointing through the files?
It was really, yes, it was always scheduled to be for getting the files out of the attic, scanning the documents, and then that position would go away at some point.
But, but this year, we agreed, this last three months, to do another five hundred a month for.
For transition. To prepare the bankruptcy.
Yeah, the transition, where it's going.
So that would go up a little bit, higher than sixty five hundred to end the year.
Yeah, if it's going in a five hundred a month clip for the last three.
But there was thirteen five budgeted for that this year, so. And the rest of that, materials and supplies is all, I don't think hardly anything's changed there from last year, the requests. Yeah, there's, last year, the budget was thirty seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars total, materials and supplies. The request for this year is only up slightly, thirty eight thousand, two hundred and fifty. That includes things like phone, internet, meeting, travel dues, mileage, office supplies is the big, biggest number there, postage, printing and binding, public notices. That's, that's about it. Of course, most of your money comes from the state, from salaries. I think most of your computer equipment is funded by the state, too.
There is in capital, page one twenty, for the courts, there is computer replacement that was budgeted in there.
See, I can pull that up.
Do we know if Donna's going to want to keep her computer? A lot of times when we have elected officials leave, we will erase or clear or whatever, if it's, if they.
I don't know, but it would be hers or the state's.
Okay, well.
We're doing their inventory right now, and there's some.
Something that's ours.
Yeah, I think she has a laptop, maybe an iPad.
There's, there's some.
So, a lot of times, they're, it's sold anyway, but if she wants it or something, just tell them we'll have to get with Brian and make sure it's cleared with us.
I'm not weighing in on that discussion, but I believe the one that she had, if she still has it, it's four years old, because she got one when I came in, January nineteen. I got one, so.
And she may not care.
She may not care, I don't know, I don't know. Here we go. Again, it's kind of small, but this is, this is a letter from Judge Beadham. Computer replacement, we have a number of computers for which their warranties are expiring, need to be upgraded, keep in sync with OSC, cost not to exceed eighteen thousand. These are machines that the state will not provide and are used in the courtrooms with county employees.
They're used by the state, but they won't provide them? That's kind of weird.
These are machines that the state will, yeah, will not provide. In the courtrooms, yeah.
We need them, but you're going to pay them.
State versus so-and-so.
So there's two other items on there. I'm not sure if that was a Greg thing or if that was a judge.
Well, the judge is requesting that, and I think Greg helped put some numbers, helped put some numbers in there. The repair to the large courtroom, again, this is that, you know, I'm sorry, it's small, but this is from Judge Beadham's letter, repair of large courtroom. It continues to deteriorate with paint and wallpaper peeling, lights that do not work, warrant carpeting, and jury seats that need reupholstering, so. The three hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight thirty-three is the amount that Greg estimated for that. More office space on.
That's a lot of repairs.
What's that?
That's a lot of repairs.
And then more, basically, I think it's almost a, not, maybe not a complete, but a very significant remodel of the big courtroom. Is that? I've seen the letter, and I don't know what he asked for. I know that the jury box needs attention. It is embarrassing when you have jurors come in, and each chair they come up to is torn, but at least.
I, I could see stuff like that.
I, I've seen one of the jurors seated in a chair next to it. So do you seat more than twelve sometime, because somebody, and?
Yeah, if we have alternates, that's true. And we'll put them up there, or we'll put them in the first row.
So, in a.
But I don't know, I have to give you a question. Actually, this capital is probably more appropriate to discuss tomorrow morning while we've got court services, and I think it's for sure Donna, and hopefully Judge Beadham in here tomorrow morning. Their budgets, yeah, okay. Okay. I'm sorry, Gary.
No, no, that's fine. And so I, I think.
Sometimes we do put up another chair, too.
It looks kind of tacky, when it's, it's a wooden chair next to the other jurors. I guess that's the.
We have, you know, an extra seat or two, but for example, we have to read sometimes where it's going to be more than four or five days, and we'll pick more than an alternate or two, just in case.
Right.
I had to replace a juror not long ago, in the middle of the trial, so luckily we had an hole in it. But anyway.
So, Mark, did you have any questions or anything?
Nope, not until I.
Yeah, look, look that over, and then, you know, you'll be coming back.
The sixteen thousand, I'm not sure now, due to all these expungements we're going to do to get the stuff with. Expungements of marijuana.
Well, it can't really be changed now. I mean, this was submitted already, so it's kind of a waste of your time. Hey, you're stuck with the degenerating.
Well, it could probably be increased, if we wanted to increase.
For personnel for the state.
Right.
The only reason we got into personnel of the state was because of the record preservation. And we've kind of migrated this year to helping with the transition from one person to another and hiring this person to help keep the books up. If you guys are going into next year with the assumption we're doing some more than record stuff with our personnel with them, then we really need to look at that, you know. I know the amount is in there, but what their function and what they're doing, I would hope that you guys would look at that.
Well, I think we just let it roll out and see, you know, if it comes to July, you're, you're three-fourths of the way, halfway through the year and three-fourths of the way through the budget, it's time to start adjusting upwards, so.
But I thought we couldn't change it once it's been presented.
We can go up, we can't go down.
Yeah, of course.
We should have changed this the day that he presented it and put it at last year's amount. So, I mean, it's kind of in there now, so this is an exercise of futility.
And we have.
We can go up, but.
We have different budget. This is basically for the clerk.
Right.
We have one fifty-three, that's for the judges and the court reporter. It's called court services, so that's another budget you guys fund. And then we have pre-trial, which is one fifty-four, that's another budget, you know, that you guys have started to fund. And then we also have then one fifty-five, that are the bailiffs, that's the court security part. So there's lots of functions to the courts that is not just the clerk's budget, so. And again, like Mark says, we'll be talking about most of those tomorrow morning.
I think next year, I'll try and schedule them all together, so clerk and us. I was just going by last year's schedule.
All right.
But they're different, so it don't matter.
They're different, yeah. I mean, certain clerks separate, like the official from judges.
Just don't let it happen next year.
Yeah.
And do it all in one day next year. I don't understand why we have this meeting, and then we go through it line by line, and we ought to just, while the department head is there, let's look through it and go line by line and be done with it, and then we can talk about salaries later on. We can have everybody in here for that party.
And a lot of that revenue on your side is.
That's the perfect time to change it. The new guy here, that way you're the bad guy. We're going to change this up. Down with Mark, down with. Okay. I don't have any questions on it. I'm not looking to increase any of it.
There will be an increase asked for tomorrow, because we have the new contract with the security.
Oh, yeah.
Cost is going up. We, that was.
Okay.
That was, I mean, no.
Maybe I am increasing it.
That was, I know, and we met with Judge Beadham back in August, so.
Yeah.
Other than that, I'm.
Yeah.
I don't have that other company, can't even find anybody.
They've stolen several of the ones that are there, so it's okay.
As the county shows them through their, I know it's all.
Yeah, it's a.
I don't remember the name of it, but yeah, we've got it.
Was it something veterans?
Been awarded.
They might have been the ones that we didn't. They might've been the ones that we didn't.
More bid, or, yeah, it's awarded.
That's the one we were worried about, wasn't it?
They weren't responding, but now they have.
Oh, is that it? I don't know, if, yeah, we had three we were looking at.
I thought we already awarded it.
I think we did.
One of them, one of them was not responding and we.
Yeah.
They, they were the low numbers too, weren't they, but?
I'm just gonna ignore you for a minute.
Guess I'm as good as I can be because. Due to this, so. I'll look over this, but maybe it is what it is, so.
Actually, he's giving you more money than was requested, whenever that happens, you just take it.
Take it, right.
Take it.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm interested, get in here and get going, so I can see how this is all gonna work out.
Yeah.
Got any questions, we're always here, so.
Yeah, my first year when I, well, I sat in when Mark and, when they were all doing it, just to kinda figure it all out.
Be sure to wear your old clothes for the initiation ceremony.
Oh, yeah, and rubber boots.
Yeah, we gotta talk about that too, 'cause I'm gonna.
So we gotta shave his head too?
The initiation.
And then there was a tattoo, I, we still know a tattoo.
I really talked to Judge Beadham, I, um, my stepdaughter is getting married New Year's Eve, so I will be in Arizona.
Then you won't be legitimate.
So he said something I'd do earlier, so I always do it earlier, so I'm gonna work that out with him. Cause I'll be in Arizona till like the second, and I'll be back the second or third.
Do you want the tattoo before or after you come back?
Is it a tattoo or a brevity?
Pardon?
I just wanna know who's gonna do it.
There's gonna be a piercing that you won't see. Think about that.
We're live.
Have to keep in mind.
All right, I'm good. I'll get with you if I get any questions, I gotta get back to work, the boss is waiting for me.
Yeah, I heard, he's really.
There are other bosses out there. The real boss.
Okay.
We have.
So what are we done, just Chris?
Yes, I'm fifteen.
Thanks, Judge.
Did we take care of you yesterday once?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're.
Yeah, that wouldn't make sense while the, if the judge is coming over for one thing, take care of all of them next time, so.
Yeah, I saw that, I mean, I, I put this, this was.
Let's blame it on Kristen, she's not here.
Pretty sure she's not gonna care.
I know.
I think you're right.
We just have the sisters on air today then?
Yeah.
I think tomorrow morning, I asked Ralph, do you wanna come in like eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Cause there's nothing with, you open at eight o'clock and there's nothing.
I think we might've stuck something for Eric on there, but that's not, or for Brian, I mean, but that's not gonna take. Yeah, we could do him and then, cause he's traveling now.
And then, and then at eight-thirty, oh, we already done Steve, right?
Yeah, we did Steve.
Right, we did Steve. At eight-thirty, uh, court, I think Judge Beadham's gonna join him, that'd be Holly, Holly and Donna from.
Okay.
Court, uh, uh, security and court services, Donna will move up from eleven o'clock up to eight, eight-thirty, do theirs back-to-back. Now I have Eric at nine-thirty, and I've contacted Sarah and Locke to try and get their smooch out sooner from, from eleven-thirty to twelve, so.
And he's on his way over. Okay, just see. Ninety-nine.
See, I think when I came into office, we had those salaries for the certified appraisers, we never filled it, so I think we finally took it out of there and said, when you find someone, we will reinstate it, we will pay them. So, um, it, you know, and that was twenty-fourteen, we don't have one yet, so.
He doesn't want, so, a lot of those that company does for us too, as far as those contracts we have with those different. Is it law offices? Yep. Ninety-nine, I think.
Yeah, I had that young man yesterday, Mark, from Channel Seventeen.
Oh, yeah.
He should, but he kept saying, I said, this is our first day. We, we're, we have a long way to go.
First of five days.
Yeah, but I said, this is.
Are you talking about the IBS series?
Yeah.
Was, was there anything on the news last night?
Yeah, there was a, a little blip, and it was about Boone County and Cole County setting budgets, it was very vague.
Yeah.
There was something on there, on, at least on the website, it was on there.
But I kept trying to tell him, I said, you know, this is just our first day, and so I said, this is, you know, we're, we're, we're working with this, but this is not the final product.
It was a slow news day.
Obviously.
Well, he set up his camera and she's like, so, do you wanna wrap it up? I had to cut it up.
Well, in truth be known, then they have come down here, doing drive-by on the, Jay Finney's stuff, because they keep talking about all the flowers and donations and everything, so they may have been doing multiple stories in the area.
I mean, you know, it, it, this, this has been, this has actually been smoother than in some years. It's, I mean, there's mainly everything, everybody's really, and we got a dumb crowd show here.
Crowd show?
No.
I did, right, so to me, the big thing is, uh, that's what I'm thinking, I have to step on the most, uh, before I get to final salaries, like I said, it's just, it's just such a tough thing for me, not having, uh, some historical knowledge or, or not having any true salary schedules to, to go by, so.
So I think on some of our elected officials, we do need, I think they have about.
And this particular office coming up, I'll sit there, there's a lot in there, so, yeah, so, and, and again, I was very tempted on this one too, but.
Well, I.
I didn't know, I didn't know who, where, it, it just, it's hard for me to say what, what.
He's putting them back in, I think until when I, you know, they, they certified people, these, uh. Just having, just having it sit there is.
I, I wasn't gonna, I was terms originally, yeah.
My thing is that we, we did, we, we said, okay, we're gonna take it out, but when you find a certified whatever appraiser, yeah.
We're recording.
Yeah, I know. I know, but, you know, it's just, but it's.
You're saying the same thing here, but you tell.
Yeah, I, I don't think Kristen.
Does anybody know anything about rural internet?
Who?
Rural internet?
We don't believe that.
Are you looking for providers or?
I, I really believe that, in this area.
Where, where do you live?
We just moved into, off of Shepherd Hills Road, and all we get is CenturyLink offers like five meg. And we call it Whisper, they can have, they have like radio towers and we just out there, I don't know.
Is, is your electric, uh, is your electric provider?
Three Rivers.
And they don't wanna do that, but, Three Rivers, now some of the co-op said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna get in this broadband business, Three Rivers said, we're not getting it.
But Three Rivers lets them use their, they do go to the right away, 'cause I got Three Rivers and it's still, I got Calibite Como, so.
Yeah, so.
So you haven't come up with that.
Three Rivers is just not doing the fiber optic themselves.
They're leasing the pole or space, getting space on the pole or whatever.
Nope, it's not even on pole, it's all buried.
Wasn't there a room that was supposed to do rural?
Yeah, but it's gonna take, it's, it's not, not gonna be any, it's not gonna be that quick, you know, like, yeah, we've got Como, we've got Calibite, we've got Whisper, we've got, and then they're, and, uh, they're all, but it's, it's.
How dense is your neighborhood?
Not, we have, so it's Shepherd Hills Estates, which I guess they developed it twenty years ago, but nobody has moved in there. So we're the fifth house out of nineteen or twenty lots since then.
So we have AT&T and we stream, boy, it's.
Yeah, well, I had fiber op, I had fiber here in Jeff when we rented, and it's just sad. It's hard to stream.
He's out in the hallway, he should be here first. Or two, no, just one.
Fiber can't justify your. Boss, I need to do those five people.
Thank you.
I understand, yeah, so, it's not a good situation.
No, it's not, and our cable's still sitting now.
No, it's, it's.
They haven't even come to America.
It's very, it's inadequate and all that.
So who's your cable provider?
Uh, the internet, I stream, I think we have to have Dish out there, I think that we have to have satellite, I don't know where cable comes out.
You decide again.
Sure.
Was there anybody dropping out at tomorrow?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
Everybody doing?
Morning.
Is it right?
How are you? Huh? Pretty good, actually, pretty good, it's been rough.
You're moving better now?
It's, I, I have high hopes for this, I really do, it was rough getting to this point, but he said we should know something in the next three or four weeks on a long-term thing, and that's, that's. Yeah, they help, but once you get afraid enough, they don't.
I just gotta get through, I, I don't.
So I understand. So, um.
You're on page ninety-nine.
Can't play on those.
Actually, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, is there any particular specific question you all have for me?
Well, I think my recommendations were pretty much in line with your requests, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Kind of go through.
Just briefly on that, we basically took each employee's position and compared it to state earnings, um, other county earnings, and obviously the smaller counties, the, the salaries are gonna be lower, couple of the bigger counties, it, sorry, it was a lot more. But, um, I figured the fairest thing for me to do would be to take them up basically to a level where they would be equal with the rest of Cole County employees, and the amount of training that they have to have for the specific positions. Then I added, um, two hundred dollars for each year of service that they had with Cole County. I also calculated it with one-year service, and I was afraid that that wouldn't be enough of a gap between the people that have been there seventy years and the people who get hired at the new salary rate, they would be right there with the employees that have a lot of time. And I didn't think that the hundred per verse was, per year was fair, so I did it as two, um, excuse me. The, um, I had added three positions to the office, uh, two residential appraisers and one commercial appraiser. But I wanted to do that with the proviso that one of the residential appraiser positions and one of the, the commercial position would only be filled by a licensed appraiser, so those positions would be open until a licensed appraiser could be found to come in and take those positions. So, that's pretty much it in a nutshell, I added in a little bit for office stuff, for having an additional employee and possibly, you know, having something there in case we actually did find out somebody that was certified, which would be great. We would have money in the budget to take care of that, um, the.
Office equipment, furniture, I see it went up a little bit higher yet.
Yeah. Chris, did we just see a, um, salary request for a clerk or something? We, we hired a new person, yeah, yeah, I had an eight-year employee, very sharp. I hired her away from Walmart as a manager, and she was with me for eight years, and she honestly told me, if it paid more, she probably would've stayed. But the problem with a lot of county offices is there's really nowhere to advance to, you know, I've got three supervisors over there basically, and they're gonna be there for years, and there's not anywhere else to go, so we tried to take care of it a little bit with the salary, and did.
Just, just explain a little bit, I, I got it up here, what we did.
Okay.
Is start with the current salary.
Yes.
This base adjustment is like what you want each of these positions to be like their base salary, like, uh.
Was that including the per-year number?
No, no, this is what you start, this is like what you.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, gotcha.
Get in as, as base salary for like a residential appraiser one, about forty thousand, um, and, and then, now we put on the four percent COLA, and then finally the, what we talked about, the years of service adjustment, so, that's.
Yeah, and I, I really appreciate Mark modified that for me a little bit, um, I do remember looking at it now previously. But, uh, yeah, that really worked out well for us, the way he got that set up, so it really helped me in getting things calculated.
And then the big increase, of course, is the, like you said, requesting the three new.
Yeah, three new employees.
Three new positions.
Yeah.
So, what's the, the projected range of salaries for the, a certifier, and can you, can you find them? Well, you, you said that, I mean, I'm sorry, licensed that, well.
The licensed would start, depending on how many years of actual appraiser experience they would have, it would be at the base residential appraiser two, forty-five thousand. And the reason that it's higher than a one is because the one doesn't have to have a certification, but the two will. So, um, I really hadn't given a lot of thought to, you know, the number of years as a residential appraiser. I thought that that was something that we could probably look at a little bit down the road. But, you know, I'm thinking that maybe there should be a little bit of something for, for how many years of service they had at appraiser or employed in an assessor's office or something.
Well, I know, yeah, one time we had one of those in your budget forever and ever and ever.
Yeah.
I think we finally took it out, but I told you and I was still telling you.
Yes, you did.
And I still promised.
Yes.
When you find that one, we will, we will.
Yes, you did say that, yes.
So I'm.
And then that's why I did it.
Yeah, and I'm still, yeah, I'm still standing behind that, 'cause if, yeah.
If you think it's better to not put it in now and wait until we find somebody to put it in, that would be okay. I mean, you could do the summary of the year where you could put the initial in.
Yeah.
So however you guys wanna do that.
Well, that's, that's what we.
Yes.
Have done, but I, again, I will give you my word.
Yes, I, and I appreciate.
And I know trying to find, but that's the problem.
I, I tried to hire one away from, uh, he did part-time Jefferson County and part-time Warren County, he had autistic child, and they have really good services in St. Louis, not quite so good down here, so he didn't wanna come and bring a family.
Were you in the ballpark money-wise for him to come here?
Um, actually, we were a little. Um, actually, we were a little bit higher than the two part-time salaries, uh, put together, but it was within, gosh, it's been several months, I remember almost a year since I talked to him. I think that we were in anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred.
Okay.
Position.
Was he certified? Did you say he was?
Yes, he was commercial certified by the state of Missouri.
Okay.
And I tried really hard to talk him into coming down.
Do they have to work for a certified appraiser for two years after they get their testing and stuff done to become certified?
No, the, the way that works is you, you have to do, have so many hours spent in appraisal.
Okay.
And what that means is if you come into work, wherever you work, you work an eight-hour day and let's say, uh, you were on phone calls an hour, you took lunch and a couple of breaks, you spent three and a half hours actually on working appraisals, that three and a half hours goes into a logbook and it's only three and a half hours. And they have to have, I want to say it's, I think it's two hundred and fifty actual appraisal hours before they can become certified. And that's in addition to, um, I think it's thirty hours of appraisal training and there's a couple more hours and something else and I don't remember what it was. Oh, you have to have a, uh, associate's degree, I used to be a bachelor's for that position. They changed that in two thousand and eight, which was a horrible move. That's what created all the shortage that we have for appraisers. Because nobody wants to go to school for four years and get a bachelor's degree in something and then go to work as an appraiser and maybe make thirty thousand dollars or thirty-five thousand. Some people didn't, didn't get into the field. So we have a, a big deficit there, I would say. So, um, did that answer the question?
Yeah, I was thinking it was more than that. And then, are you talking, what you're talking about, is that different than being an appraiser?
It's, they have, I think they have a, an appraiser trade-y position. You see, this is all handled by the, uh.
I'm probably thinking about an appraiser if the other, that may be a totally different thing.
It, it could be, but this is by the, the appraisal commission, which is appointed by the governor. They set those standards along with what's done nationally and here in the United States. I double A O, it's International Association of Assessing Officers. They kind of try to set the standard and then they ask the other groups to follow in line. That way everything is equal, no matter where you go. We're, we're appraising things the way they're, the way the I double A O says and we're doing that nationally and sometimes worldwide. I know there's two hundred and fifty to three hundred hours of actual appraisal work. There's, I guess, thirty or sixty hours of classroom and there's another portion of that, but I can't remember what it is off the top of my head, no, in addition to the associate's degree. And then the commercial is, um, at least three hundred hours of actual appraisal work along with like either sixty or ninety hours of class time and then an additional number of something else, which is similar to the residential except it's more hours.
So if they don't have that, can we hire them and train?
Yes.
Inside to do that?
Yes, we have, we can, yes, absolutely. And, um, I was initially, several years ago, talking to Newman County at Ruth about creating a contract. So when somebody came to work here, if we were going to be paying for their training and their housing and food and things like that, when they were away at training, then we wanted something in place that if they decided to leave after getting their training or partway through, they had to reimburse the county for a portion of that, depending on how long they've been there. Because I don't want to get in a situation where we've got somebody ready to be certified and they decide, you know what, this is not for me, I'll leave. And all that training is down there.
Job offer.
I think Eric Landwehr might have something, uh, along those lines for CDL.
We have it in several departments.
Yeah.
Jill worked on a contract with them, so if you want to work with Jill.
Yeah, that would be great, yes.
So that could be, yeah.
Anything else?
I think in a nutshell, your, other than salaries, your budget's pretty much the same as last year. I didn't remember, you have that, you got that county vehicle now, so we got some, uh.
Is that helping, Chris?
Oh, my goodness, yes, yeah, that's fantastic. And if we could come up with a second one, that would be even better. And I, I have talked to Sheriff Wheeler sometimes, so he might be coming up on something or, or not. I guess I can give him a phone call or send him an email. Yeah, we only put in, I guess it was a thousand for the vehicle, equipment and operations and I think that, um, my residential supervisor contacted Public Works and maybe talked to Eric about what one vehicle yearly would basically spend for gas, maintenance, whatever it needs.
The, the postage budget is quite a bit higher.
Well, from what the amended budget was, it actually went down because we're spending less on postage.
They share that cost with the collector and then that's paid back through there. Plus then there, um, you send down notices several different times of the year and we pay a contractor for that. It doesn't actually go through our postage machine, right? Or you tell me, Chris, I don't know.
No, I, I think that they did say, um, we work with Central Bank on part of that for the printing and, um, getting it together. And I don't know if it's, it's those, that portion of it that is done by them, but they did say that postage costs were going to be going up in January, I believe. And I don't remember what the amount was.
Stock up on the forever stamps?
Yes, sir.
I don't know how Walmart can be selling them for less than face value.
No, good question.
You can buy rolls online for like twenty dollars cheaper than.
We're all listening very attentively, believing.
The only thing I can hear is they bought these back when, you know, they're forever stamps.
Still getting your Christmas card on email.
I'd send you mine, but I need you still.
But, but, okay, where I'm coming from, or the background of my question is this year, projected activity is eleven thousand dollars in postage.
That could be low because.
We had.
B S N A did some projections and I, I, I basically doubled it. Well, we're, activity through September was fifty-one hundred. I thought, well, I know you're gonna.
Yeah, in November.
I didn't know exactly what it was. I could, I probably should've got with you, maybe with a more accurate, but I just put eleven thousand. I figured it'd be at least double that by the end of the year. It could be even higher, I, I guess, I'm not sure.
The taxes don't go out.
Sorry, one more, the fifteen thousand was the actual amount in twenty twenty-one, if that, if that helps. So that might be closer to what the actual this year will be, so.
Right now, we're at thirteen-five.
Oh, thirteen-five.
Now.
Have we just recently paid a bill?
Yes.
Because, okay. Um, of course, tax bill's gonna go out like the first week in November, it contains the tax bill and it also contains the yellow assessment sheet.
It didn't go out the first week in November this year.
It didn't?
No.
I got it last week or the week before, I can't remember.
We, we had several people that got it early, but I never did receive a bill. I had to call and get one, send one out, I don't know what the deal was, but they evidently had a problem with the printers, get the tax bills out.
And I'll have to say mine was better, because usually I get three different envelopes.
Yeah, me too.
And this year I got one.
Yeah, yeah, they were all.
They were all in one.
Consolidated into one envelope.
You got too much stuff.
I thought that, I thought, I thought the collector was waiting on your assessment forms. That's what I was doing. I understand, but they went out late and the reason they went out late was because they were waiting for your assessment forms to be included.
Not to my knowledge, unless the printer had problems getting the printer out, but nothing I've been made aware of.
I get mine at.
Ask over there.
I get mine at the post office. I went out there and grabbed it this week, so it, it came in last week.
Came in last week.
And we have had some that were almost, almost three weeks ago. I've talked to people who have done that and of course talked to people, I've had a call, they say, how do you get a tax bill? What's going on?
When you say over there, who, who's our provider for that service?
Yeah, well, see, we work with Central Bank, or I'm sorry, not Central Bank, the, the large corporate group that covers Central Bank. I don't remember what it's called. The one out there off of Bubbling. And, uh, we've also worked with Brown Printing on that. And usually that's taken care of by my personal property manager. And she works with, uh, I've done that because I can't think of her name now. At Central Banks, they're on the phone and emails quite often to get that taken care of.
Her address is paid to Brown Printing.
Okay, so this, and I don't know if it was the.
Invoice was paid to Brown.
If everything was printed there or a portion or what? Because they've been trying to spread it out to reduce cost a little bit. Took that, entered that, or do we need to look at something further?
I'm, I was curious as to why they were typically, and this is unfortunate, I think, but typically the taxpayer receives a tax bill about a week before the election, right?
Sometimes they go out like the fourth or the seventh of November.
Right, or, or the week, yeah.
Yeah.
This year, they didn't, they were late. Many were late.
Yeah, they were.
But I was told the reason they were late is because they were waiting on the yellow paper.
That's not accurate to my knowledge. Um, I spoke to Mary Ann earlier this week and later last week and I asked her about the problem because I hadn't received one and she said that Brown Printing had some error that they were dealing with. And at that time, they didn't even know who got bills and who didn't get bills. So I don't know what the entire situation is there, that's something that's not handled by my office.
I got two different colors.
I'm sorry?
I got a yellow one and a pink one. My daughter, my daughter's was on a different color.
Oh, really? Okay.
But we got.
Usually we do business on blue and, and, um, the personal one on yellow. I do remember them talking about doing something on pink, pink to make another change. We've been trying to add more and more to it and it's gotten to the point that, you know, we've got the front and the back of almost all of the pieces of paper being printed on, which obviously raises the price a little bit, but not so much as if you would send it out separately. So that's what we've tried to do to, to keep those costs down. But I don't know what's up with, uh, Brown Printing right now, but that's who I was told the error lie.
What, my question about the postage kind of stems from, uh, I saw a publication or a note somewhere, I think it was from Jackie, that said, ten thousand notices are gonna be sent out later next year.
Yes.
Uh, which is a dramatic increase in what has been sent out in the past, like tenfold.
And we kind of heard, well, there were, there was a couple of years that we were down around ser, two or three thousand, but I don't remember any years that were down to a thousand or less.
Okay.
I know that in the.
Eightfold.
The nine, eight, nine, nine and ten and eleven and twelve, things were really down. I don't know that we had, see, every, every cycle, you have properties to go up and you have properties to go down. Majority of them stay the same. And the, those notices of increase are required by statute and we mail those out and I believe it's the middle of April. So that way the taxpayer has the document, they know they're gonna get an increase so they can call and set up a time to, uh, schedule appeal.
So Eric, Eric, are you asking, do we need to increase the amount of this postage?
No, I'm not, I don't think, I think it's been explained enough. I was giving some background as to why I was asking the question. But that, that's on the heels of your representation, I believe, the secondhand, because it's only, well, comes from the school, that you were going to either review or reassess half the county in twenty-three and half the county in twenty-five.
With the staffing that we have right now, we have a plan written out that we will visit the actual properties, fifty percent of them, in Cole County. The state statute doesn't require that we review or look at every property in the county every reassessment cycle. But those numbers are still sent through the system. We put a, a modifier on the construction costs and what we used to do is we printed out data sheets for every property that we were reviewing and the, um, appraiser would look at it and compare the values with four to five other comparables and see if, okay, is the number that the computer sent out, is this close enough to these others with adjustments made for differences to be an accurate value? And now we can't do that because it takes ten minutes to set up each comparable. So all we've got is basically the, the cost system. And we're programming now. They have a possibility of doing a comparable, but it takes about ten minutes to set up the information for one comparable. You, you put that information in what you want to look at specifically and you think about all the differences there could be in different houses. All of that stuff is listed. So we have to select that and then, the computers through that and then they pull up one comparable. And we have one, so then we gotta go back and do it a little bit different to add something or leave something out from the first one we did and another ten minutes and then we've got two of them. So it's just not possible to.
You, you plan to visit or view or do a.
Physically review.
Fifty, fifty percent?
Physically review, fifty percent.
But the statute says you reassess a hundred percent.
We will reassess a hundred percent.
You will reassess a hundred percent.
Yes, we will, yes, we will. Every year, I don't know what happened in, um, twenty twenty-one because that was when Devenant took over. No idea what, what went on there.
But stop, didn't you have Clear Basin up and running on one-one of twenty-one?
I don't.
I think we went through March or.
Yes.
Was it?
Yes.
With, uh, Clear Basin.
We went live with Devenant in October of twenty twenty. So at that point, everything was Devenant and it's Clear Basin.
We were still.
Eric, can I finish? Clear Basin was there for us to compare Devenant to Clear Basin. That's the only purpose that Clear Basin had at that point, was for us to compare what Devenant was putting in there. So we could use it as a check to try to make sure that everything was as it should be.
Okay, so let's just say somebody lives in township five and the adjacent township is ten. Is anybody in five gonna get an increase?
That's a good possibility, yeah. Yeah, it'll just depend on what the market's doing and it'll depend on the number that we have to put in for a cost, our building interior cost basically, which is what the cost method, that's what it looks at when it does an appraisal.
Someone in your office is on record of saying, there's about twenty townships.
Okay, yeah, sounds quite right.
And have given a list of the townships that are going to be reassessed and the townships that are not.
We, we need to change what we're looking at here, we're talking about review and reassess.
Yeah, we're, we're going budget right now, so I think we're kind of straight.
We're looking at review and reassess.
Well, see, this is the only time I get to talk to you because you hung up on me the last time we talked, right?
Because you were rude.
Okay.
And I'll continue to hang up if you're rude to me.
Yeah, and then when we were exchanging emails, you said you're not gonna send me any more emails.
That's right, because you kept sending me the same email time after time after time, wanting me to look at these properties and I said, as soon as we had somebody available to look at those in our regular course of business, we'll look at those.
When will that be?
I can't tell you for sure.
We're talking about.
We have over thirty-five thousand parcels to review in a county, so.
That's right, you do.
I, I really think, pardon me, gentlemen and ladies, for having to get to this point here, but I really think that you should take some time and learn how that appraisal's done, what it takes, because obviously you don't know, you even stated that here before. So you need to find out what you're talking about and make sure you're telling the truth. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, sorry about that.
You too.
I hope that we were gonna get to that point here, obviously that wasn't the case.
See y'all later.
You gotta tell the truth too. He's moving real good.
Want to make a motion to stand and recess.
Is that all we got then?
That's it.
And then we got tomorrow, eight to one.
Yeah, like I said, I asked Ralph to come in at eight.
Oh, there's a twelve-one agenda.
Want a motion to stand and recess?
Motion, motion to stand and recess until.
I think both Locke and Sarah said, I, I'll double check their emails, but I think I got a notification. I think they can both come earlier, so. Should be able to finish by.
Cause the court stuff shouldn't take long.
No, no.
You might see.
Donna's gonna come up. Yeah, Donna's gonna come up instead of eleven, she's coming up at the same time as Holly.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If Judge Bead is here, we're just gonna knock those, call them out, all that.
I'd say we'll be here right around eight o'clock, and that other thing shouldn't take-
We got Eric Hoy as the largest one.
That's gonna be, yeah, but-
And then, and then I think, I think we can get long in Sarah. Sounds like they come earlier, too.
Okay. Well, we have a motion to stand in recess until four-thirty. I have to get, eat something and do something, and then go get a shot in my back, so.
All right, go to recess then.
I'm grouchy.
Motion to stand in recess until four-thirty.
Second.
All in favor of a tie?
I brought donuts, and it breaks knickers, too.
I didn't say I.
They're coming, I don't know, come to it. Are you done?
Yes, ma'am. Harry made the motion, and I second it.
Okay.
Sam's grouchy, but he's still voted for.